All right, good evening everybody. I would like to call the Tuesday, November 28, 2017 Gardner Planning Commission Meeting to Order. If everyone will please rise and state the Pledge of Allegiance with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll now move into roll call, starting on my right.
Austin here.
Roberts here.
Mater here.
Brady here.
Freeman here.
Corum is present. Moving on to the consent agenda. All matters listed within the consent agenda have been distributed to each member of the Planning Commission for study. These items are considered to be routine and will be enacted upon by one motion with no separate discussion. If separate discussion is desired on an item from either the Planning Commission or from the floor, that item may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda. Is there any item any member of the commission would like to have removed from the consent agenda? Any item any member of the public would like to have removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion made by Brady with a second by Austin that we approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with all in favor. Regular agenda item number one, Plum Creek Manor 2, FP-17-06. Consider a final plat for Plum Creek Manor 2, a 78 lot, single-family residential subdivision located north of the intersection of West 183rd Street and South Mulberry Street. Harold Phelps, Phelps Engineering applicant and RC Plum Creek LLC property owner of record at a presentation this evening.
Good evening Commissioners. Michelle Loniger, Principal Planner. This item before you is a final plat. You saw the preliminary plat for this property earlier in the year. Just to reference to where the property is that we're looking at, South Sander Street is on the far left of your page, which is the west. And then West 183rd Street is to the south of the property. Other properties of note in the area, the fire station is just to the south of the property abutting it. Here's some pictures of the property. This is looking southwest from Cypress Street where it terminates into the property from the north. This is looking southeast from Mulberry Street where it terminates into the property from the north. Relatively flat piece of property. This is looking northwest from Cypress Street where it terminates to the south. One of my pictures dropped out. This is a visual of the proposed plat for Plum Creek Manor 2. Property is zoned R1, as is the adjacent property to the nor-- well, pretty much all the way around the property except for the city's water tower and the fire station which are at the southwest corner of the property. Those are zoned agriculture. This is a proposed 78 lot, single-family subdivision. In addition, they're dedicating a small--it's a pedestrian access tract, dedicating that to the city for potential future access to that city property. And that's outlined in red on the bottom left of your screen. Staff findings, that the plat is consistent with the comprehensive plan which identifies the property for a single-family residential. The final plat is in substantial compliance with the preliminary plat. Easements are sufficiently provided for for utilities. Excise tax in the amount of $187,276.59 will be levied on the plat for arterial street Just wanted to highlight a couple of the conditions that are included in the staff recommendation. This is the street tree plan that the applicant has provided. You can see on here the site triangles around the corners. It's always nice to have those included on this so you can make sure that the street trees are not located within there. You'll notice that typically the street trees are outside the property in that right-of-way area between the sidewalk and the street. Any of those street trees that are closer to that site triangle will be moved in towards the property a little bit more. Just to touch on some places where the conditions were added, the proposed street tree plan provides the required tree spacing. However, there's room to add an additional tree at the southwest corner of lot--southeast corner of Lot 27 to meet the spacing requirements. And that's right here where the red dot is added. Code requirement for a minimum of three genus and five species which applicant has met, however, the standard states that no more than 20 percent of any one species can be included. The plan shows three species that are over the maximum percentage, so that needs to be adjusted. And additionally, if you'll notice, all of the same species of the trees are on the same street. This isn't a code requirement, but we would ask that those be kind of mixed so that if we get a disease for one specific tree type, you're not losing all of the trees on the same street. It's just a standard practice. Additionally, there were some minor changes to the notes that were noted in the staff report. Staff recommends approval subject to the following conditions, that the excise tax in the amount stated shall be paid prior to the city, prior to recording. Construction plans for any utilities, infrastructure, or public facility shall meet all technical specifications. And public improvement plans shall be submitted and approved prior to the release of the plat for recording. Number three, revise the street tree plan to add a tree at the southeast corner of Lot 27. Number four, revise the street tree plan planting note five to read City of Gardner instead of JCW Sanitary. Number five, revise the street tree plan planting note six to remove irrigation. Number six, revise the street tree plan to meet the maximum percentage of one species to be 20 or below, 20 percent or below. Number seven, revise the street tree plan to mix a species of trees along all streets. And then we would recommend that the government--send it to the governing body and accept the dedication of right-of-way easements.
Great. Thank you, Michelle. Do we have the applicant with us this evening? Anything to add, please come forward, state your name and address for the public record.
My name's Judd Claussen with Phelps Engineering. I'm here on behalf of Harold and our client who is proposing this subdivision. Nothing really additional to add. Michelle covered the items, I think, well. No exceptions. This is a kind of a finishing off of an area that is always planned to be R1, so no exceptions. We agree with the stipulations and here to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioners, questions, comments for staff? We can start over here with Brad. Anything?
No.
Tori?
Yes.
I don't have anything either. Looks good. So I hear no questions or comments from the Commissioners. I entertain a motion on this item.
After review of application FP-17-06, a final plat for Plum Creek Manor 2, parcel ID CF221425-2003, and final plat dated November 2, 2017, and street tree plan dated November 2, 2017, and staff report dated November 28, 2017, the Planning Commission approves the application provided the following conditions are met. Conditions 1 through 7 as listed. Oh, and recommends the governing body accept the dedication of right-of-way easements.
Second. We have a motion made by Freeman with a second by Roberts, that after review of application FP-17-06, a final plat for Plum Creek Manor 2, parcel ID CF221425-2003, and final plat dated November 2, 2017, and street tree plan dated November 2, 2017, and staff report dated November 28, 2017, the Planning Commission approves the application provided the following conditions are met, items 1 through 7, and recommends the governing body accept the dedication of right-of-way easements. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with all in favor. Regular agenda item number two, Tuscan Farms. Located south of Nike Elementary School along South Gardner Road, Jim Long, Allen Brand Drews and Associates applicant, and Chad Burkdahl property owner of record. We have three items tonight that will be presented separately with three separate motions. We have item A, Z-17-02, hold a public hearing on and consider rezoning of 82.80 acres from A agriculture to R1, single-family residential and R3 garden apartment district. We have item B, PP-17-07, consider a preliminary plat for Tuscan Farm, an 82.80 acre mixed residential subdivision. And then we'll have item C, FP-17-07, consider a final plat for Tuscan Farms containing 78--70 single-family lots. Again, three separate motions and three separate presentations. So with that, Michelle, turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Commissioner, Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. My name's Michelle Cricks, planner at the City of Gardner, and this evening we're going to be discussing Tuscan Farms, a rezoning request, a preliminary plat, and a final plat request. What I'm going to do is I'm going to give three separate presentations, and then after each application, we'll pause for discussion and a motion, and then carry on with the next case. So first, we're going to touch on the rezoning request, which is the applicant is rezoning to requ--or to rezone 82.8 acres from agricultural district designation to R1, which is single-family residential, and R3, which is a garden apartment district for Tuscan Farms, located south of Nike Elementary along South Gardner Road. So in the screen in front of you is kind of the overall area here. On the right is kind of more of an aerial view. You can see Main Street, you can see I-35, and then that red dot is the proposed location of Tuscan Farms. They're at the very southern point of the city. Nike Elementary is located just north of this property. The property in front of you is outlined in blue. So we have Nike Elementary directly to the north, and then to the south, east, and west kind of around it is going to be unincorporated Johnson County. And then here are the current city limits. The current utilities on site here, you see in front of you, the yellow is going to represent the current gas facilities in this location. So you can see to the northwest corner of the property, you see that there is currently a gas line that runs adjacent to I-35, and then there's another gas line that comes down South Gardner Road. In red are going to be electric utilities, and then you can see in blue, they are also along South Gardner Road, which will represent the water. Stormwater, sanitary sewer, those are currently not in place, and the applicant will need to install those for the development. So the current surrounding zoning, because this site is surrounded by both incorporated into the city and unincorporated Johnson County, we're dealing with multiple zoning designations. So directly to the north with Nike Elementary, and then there's some raw land, vacant land that is owned by the same people who own the trailer, mobile home just north. Those are zoned agricultural under the city designation. Directly to the east, on the east side of Gardner Road, is considered rural residential under the Johnson County zoning classification, which is rural agricultural uses and single-family residential with a minimum 10-acre lot. You'll see that's the same designation along the south and on the west side of the site. Now, directly located south of the southeast corner of the site is RLD, which is the Johnson County zoning classification for low-density residential with a minimum three-acre lot So we're going to just kind of show you just some pictures of the site, just to kind of get a feel of it. The picture in front of you is currently the only structure that is on the site, which is an old vehicle barn. I've talking with the applicant, this structure is to be removed in December, but that is currently the only structure on site. This is a view of the property from South Gardner Road looking to the north and west. So this is the very southeast corner of the property. You can see that the property is vacant, there's nothing else on it except for that barn. You'll see basically it's scrub grass, some volunteer trees, and it slopes to the southeast from where I'm at in this picture. It also will slope to the west as well. This is a picture taken basically from the barn, looking to the southeast. So you can see the scrub grass, you can see the volunteer trees, and some tree brush there in the middle of the property. This is looking to the northwest, so you can barely see the highway, and then you can start seeing the intermodal park from this location. And this picture is going to be on the west side of the property, which was on--which I didn't--didn't have good access to, but it kind of shows where you can see the tributary, the open--the green, the floodway on the west side of the property. So the applicant is requesting to rezone the property from current agricultural designation to combined of R1, which is single-family residential, and R3, which is the garden apartment You can see on the slide in front of you how he's proposing to lay that out. We've got the single-family residential encompasses most of the site, goes all the way around the northwest and south, and there's a small pocket of R3 kind of tucked right in the middle, adjacent to South Gardner Road. The applicant is proposing in the R1, that the building types will be the detached suburban house type, and in the R3 are going to be these quad, single-story garden apartments are going to go in that location. This area is subject to the I-35 and Gardner Road interchange sub-area plan, which is a separate plan from the 2014 comprehensive plan. The sub-area plan was--is in place to address development in portions of the City of Gardner, the City of Edgerton, and unincorporated Johnson County. On the graph in front of you shows, from the sub-area plan, shows the overall city, which is highlighted in blue, and the sub-area, the study area of which is planned, shows, will show is from 183rd to 199th to the south, from Moonlight to the east to Waverly Road in the west. And so in that sub-area plan, it shows on the land--the future land use map, that this area, which is highlighted mostly in yellow, to be designated as low-density residential. So you look at the graph in front of you, you can see the blue, which is the public and semi-public use, which would represent Nike Elementary. The regional commercial, which is where the Olatha Ford is, other vacant property that they own that tucks around Nike Elementary, that adjacent to the north property line. As regional commercial, there's also a community commercial located a little further south and west. And everything in yellow on this graph is going to be the low-density residential. The low-density residential has been defined in the Gardner Land Development Code as residential districts to promote open space and rural preservation, to develop more walkable neighborhoods with a mix of housing types and connections to walk--to walkable neighborhood centers. As I've stated, that the applicant is proposing two zoning districts for development, which is the R1 and R3. The R1 provides for residential living in a low-density neighborhood setting with access to supporting uses such as schools, churches, parks, and other public facilities to reinforce that residential neighborhood feel. The R3 provides for a higher density pattern as a transition between neighborhoods and less--and more intense uses. Now, there's a--the residential goals and policies of the sub-area plan do state, quote, "Medium-density residential use is encouraged not to provide for large-scale apartment-type development, but instead should take the form of small lot, detached, attached, cluster-type housing, or small-scale multi-dwelling structures such as two-story, four-to-six plexes." So the plan that is proposed by the applicant, in staff's opinion, does comply and does follow the goals and policies of the sub-area plan. Just bringing this map--or this graphic back up to take another look at it. You can see here what the applicant has proposed. So we have the R3, which is being buffered by the single-family residential on the northeast and south of that more higher use, or higher dwelling use than the low-density residential. The lots along the south property line, which buffers the R3 from these--the larger lots in the unincorporated Johnson County, are much larger lots. They average a little over 19,000 per square foot of lot. So those are much larger, more estate-style lots along that south boundary to buffer the R3 from the existing uses to the south of the property. Overall, the site has--is proposed to have 256 dwelling units on 82 acres, which equals approximately 3.1 dwelling units per acre, which is a little over 14,000 square foot of lot size when you average it out over the entire--which are you--if you entire-- over the entire, excuse me, development, which is really considered very low-density residential when you start thinking in that terms. So it's reviewing the site, is staff's opinion that the site is suitable for the R1 and R3, for the overall site because of the combined use and the low impact. Staff is recommending that the Planning Commission recommend approval to the governing body, case Z1702, a rezoning from A, which is agricultural district, to R1, single-family residential district, and R3 garden apartment district for Tuscan Farms for the parcel IDs noted in front of you, located south of Nike Elementary and along South Gardner Road. Because this is a public hearing, I'm going to stop here and give the owner or the representative of the owner an opportunity to comment on their project, and to allow those into attendance to also come to the podium to speak, and the Planning Commission to discuss and make a motion. Since the preliminary plat and final plat that follow tonight for the site is not a public hearing, this will be the opportunity for the public to comment on the site at this time.
Yeah, great. Thank you. With that, we will now open the public hearing, so those wishing to speak, please approach the podium. Three minutes for an individual, five minutes for a group. Please state your name and address for the record and be heard. Please come forward to the podium, state your name and address for the public record.
Thank you. My name is Ron Friend. I live at 1988 Old South Gardner Road. I also own the property adjoining the state lots there. I wanted to say that I had several meetings with the city, and then I also had a meeting with Clint, the owner of this. He is very good to work with. I had a good--good relationship with him, because he took them four plexes out adjoining me and put estate lots in there. The only problem I had, I didn't realize at the time, is the lots that he has with four plexes, which are nice-looking, and I agree with that, but the problem I have now is they could put anything in there. If he--somebody else decides to buy that, they could put three-story units and a whole lot of other stuff, which is not a planned development, so I understand, I have to live with that. The next thing is the water shed on this. I have a floodplain coming through mine, and also over in the corner where they have designated on the plan, it shows the water all coming to that corner that drains that way out of the water shed. But it said, at one time, they were going to put a dry basin in to let it fill and then go down, but as I was reading the reports and stuff tonight, they don't need that. But if they bring all that water down, that off that one, when it's finished up, even that drains into that corner, that's going to come right on across my property, and I have problems with water right now with no buildings in there. And the traffic is one of the things that I'm concerned with. As I come in tonight, there's a steady line of traffic right now coming from the intermodal trying to get on the highway. And we put that many more houses in there. I don't know how far down we are on interchanges and stuff like that with the city, but that's one thing that really I think we're in bad need of, because there's going to be some bad wrecks out there. And the one thing that they inherited, I don't think they showed on the map, and I-- if they bring it up a little closer on your map, we have a dump on the backside of that place that I've been working over five years with a county trying to get it cleaned up. And you, the city, is now inheriting that problem. I hope that I can work with you guys a little better than I could with the county. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. I do know we've got our city engineer on hand to answer questions, and I know it's-- we're in the public hearing, motion part of tonight's meeting, so I know we've got some answers to some of your questions. I was made aware of that before the meeting, but I think let's give others a chance to speak. Don't want to lose sight of your concerns.
Thank you.
So just know that they're noted, and we'll definitely get to that in discussion. Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Please come forward, state your name and address for the public record.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to speak tonight. My name's Audrey Sparks. I live at 30056 West 199th Street. My concern is, and I don't know--I know they posted this map up there, but there is a road that comes into our property, and I'm assuming then just dead ends. Eventually, I'm assuming that would be if you would take over our properties and could continue to put housing down in there. But my concern is the water that would come off of that road onto our property, much like Mr. Friend. We have water issues on our property. We have a barn back up there. So anyway, that's my concern. And again, I would like to reiterate what Bron said with the traffic out there. I'm assuming you know the roads out there are--it's--they have ditches, there's no curbs. So the roads out there are a concern as you're coming into that area. So appreciate your time.
Absolutely. Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? We've got a nice turnout in the audience tonight, so I'm sure there's others out there.
Good evening. My name is Lee Warren. I live at 19770 South Gardner Road. We're the first estate home adjacent to the south of that property, just on the other side of Mr. Friend's property that borders that. One of our biggest concerns is we're kind of sitting up on the rise right there, and we're the first home. And when we look down on that, we're concerned about what the buffering, or the landscape plans would be for the backs of those homes. Would it be fencing? Would it be natural vegetation that's going to buffer that? Because we'll be able to look right in there, they'll be able to look right back at us because we're just sitting right on top of the hill. So that poses a concern for us as well as to what the plans are in place for the surrounding tree plan and shrubbery plan and landscaping plans for that as it builds out. So that was my concern. That and along--I will reiterate, the traffic is horrible. There--every morning I go to work, 6:45, there's traffic backed up out onto I-35. It's just a matter of time before we have massive accidents out there. So it's getting at critical mass now. We add another 250 homes in there, that's two drivers per household. So that's 500 vehicles coming and going on to Gardner Road, South Gardner Road, every morning. That's a lot. So if--when we don't have that now, we've got three homes, four homes, so in that area. So traffic is a major concern of ours. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Absolutely. Thank you.
Good evening. Matt Hamilton, one-nine-seven-eight-five Gardner Road. I, I echo everything else that, that everybody else is saying with regards to, to water and traffic. One thing I would like to, to draw attention to, I know it was, excuse me, agreed in the sub-plan that this area would be used as low-density residential. It does call out that the R3 medium-to-high-density residential is not consistent with the sub-area plan. I do recognize that, that while that is called out, the garden apartments as a whole still fall under the low-density plan, though do have concern if we are changing the sub-area plan to include the R3. How much further would we consider to have future hearings to then rezone? I would prefer this body seat to stick with just the R1. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak? Is the applicant here with us this evening?
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Hi, I'm Clint Burkdahl with Tuscan Farm LLC. And I'll try to talk about all of those things. One of them, not in any necessary order, in any order, but the little dump that's in the back of the property is there for sure, and that's going to be taken care of when we tear down that building. I've already talked to the group that's going to do it, so that'll be gone with the building. The water drainage issues, I think the city engineer would probably be the best one to talk about that. We definitely don't want to create any problems for sure. The traffic, I've been out the, the road a lot of times coming on and off there myself, so definitely is a lot of traffic, and I think there's a bigger study going on with the interchange right now. And I think everybody knows something's going to be done with that at some point. The garden district, the garden, garden apartments, I know the district calls them garden apartments, but I would hesitate to call them apartments. What they're going to be are single-story attached, I don't know if you know what a pinwheel design, design is. You see them in South Alatha and some other places, but what they, what the, the idea of them is, in the past, you've seen a lot of duplexes where you just have the garages facing the street and it looks like a row of warehouses. These things, what they do is they cock them sideways to where, as you're facing from the street, you're actually looking at the side of the house and you're looking at windows. And people drive in a private drive, and then the garages are in off the side. And so, you're not looking at, it's hiding garages is probably the biggest thing that you're doing there. But a few things I'd note about that is that they will be a single-story. There are going to be maintenance provided. They're not going to be rental, rental apartments or anything like that. They're probably going to cater more towards, I don't think we're going to make it a, make it a fifty-five and old requirement. We're kicking that around. They're probably not going to, but I think that will be the predominant, buyer of those will be empty nesters, but, but probably not everybody. So, I think, and the other reason why we did that was not so much to get a high, uh, density. What we did when we talked to the city staff initially was everybody wanted a, to step up the game, I guess we'd say, as far as subdivisions in Gardner. And there was talk that we felt like we were losing too many move-up buyers to go into Alatha. And so, what we did out there in the R1 part and the amenities package is we've got allowances made like in the, in the R1 part, the houses that we're going to be doing, they're going to start up there around the school, which is going to be around the grade school. Those will be more of the four-bedroom, there'll be some three-bedroom ranches, but mostly four-bedroom houses in the, starting at about three hundred up to about three fifty. As we move towards the back and especially along the edges facing the outlying areas where there's going to be some walkout lots, and as time goes by a little bit, we'll be over four hundred thousand on a lot of those houses out there, and I think that will help capture a lot of the move-up buyers. The other thing that we're going to do is we're trying to set a new standard on amenities package. We've been looking at some other, we're working with a Realtor group named Wyker, Graham Welch, and they've got twenty-five subdivisions or thirty subdivisions of about three thousand lots total around the Kent City area, and a lot of them are down in this area. I don't think they have anything in Gardner yet, but they've got an in-house package and they're really good at putting all this stuff together, everything from the subdivision logo to the amenities package and the pool designs. And these are not pools like you have seen in the past. I mean, they're really modern, really nice. They've got fire pits, and I had pictures with me that I was going to bring, left it on the table when I left. But what I would say about that is just that we're going to have a, try to do something to attract people here and keep them here, but the, the pool will be bigger and something you probably haven't seen in town before. The clubhouse will have an exercise facility in it. The, there'll be a volleyball, no, not a volleyball, a tennis and basketball court and a playground. That'll be mainly be what will be there in the, the amenities package, but the, we're going to copy a couple of them that I've seen that have a, the clubhouse right there next to the pool. It has the area for the exercise, but then it's also got a place that the people that live there can, it wouldn't be rent, they'd probably just sign up to use it, but like a little kitchen and an outdoor bar type thing right there to where they can have little pool parties and do things like that. And the garden apartments partly came about from trying to do something a little more modern. That's the other, the second thing I got from city staff. The first one was trying to keep people here from moving, and the second one was trying to do something more modern. And within that are single-family houses. We have some modern looks to those, but they're still your, your basic, single-family house, your four-bedroom. But these fourplexes are, the fact that they're maintenance provided, they have really nice landscaping packages. You've probably seen these things around. Really nice landscaping package professionally done, professionally maintained. So, it's not going to be a situation to where there are, the last thing that's going to happen out there, this will be protected by covenants and, and everything. The last thing that's going to happen out there is a bunch of rentals with people putting, storing their stuff in the garage and cars in the front like you typically see. That's exactly not, that's not going to happen. And I'm sure I'm missing a few things, but any questions I can address to anybody, I would, I would do so. Oh, the gentleman that was talking about the landscape buffer, that's a good point. I know we're, we're doing that along Gardner Road to start with. There's going to be, there'd be a nice entrance monument, and there's going to be extensive landscape buffering along there, and it's, it is going to carry around to the south. And on the west, there's nothing around almost all of that. I think part of that even goes into woods and floodplains, so those would be some really nice private lots back in there. But I think that is, that's a good, it's, it's a good concern. I think it's something that we definitely want to do. So, any questions anybody has, I'll try to answer them.
Great. I think for now we'll hold off on questions until we get a little further in the process if we...
Are three apartments, are those purchased then?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're townhomes is what, what they'll be.
And the square footage on those?
Those are about fifteen hundred. They'll be, they're going to be, there'll be a quadplex of a buildings what they'll be, and in each building we'll have four of them. And they'll be, each one of them will be, there're going to be two different styles of plans, but there'll be a two-car garage and about a fifteen-hundred-foot one and two-bedroom, and they're going to be on basements with the option to finish, just like a reverse ranch, with the option to finish two bedrooms and a living room in the basement. So, they'll be, they'll be really nice. The other thing we're going to do, I don't want to force it on the subdivision, but we're going to offer an option, the same company that we hired to do the maintenance provided for the, these, the fourplexes, we're going to offer that as an option for everybody in the subdivision. I don't want to force it on it because I found that a lot of, you know, a lot of the younger people don't want to do it and people still want to mow their yard, but get, given an option, because I think that will also, there's been, a new market has opened up in the last five years definitely, maybe, maybe ten of, it used to be people that wanted to go into the maintenance provided thing, needed, had to go, had to, the only thing that was available was either go into an apartment or something like, like these. But there has, there's a big market now for people that had a pretty decent-sized house their whole life, and they do want to downsize a little bit, but they really, they, they like the maintenance free thing, and, but they want it in a single-family house version, and they don't want a little tiny one. So, what we're going to do is offer that as a, as a, an option for people to do that. Anything else?
Okay.
Thanks.
We're good for now. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
I would like to.
Great.
My name's Mike Hale, three-zero-one-five-eight, West one-hundred-and-ninety-ninth Street. I'm a traffic guy. I would say within the last month, twice I've not been able to get in Gardner, due direct at one-hundred-and-ninety-first and I-35 due to the intermodal. Plus, there's been at least two accidents at one-hundred-and-ninety-ninth and Gardner Road where I live due to all the traffic. My big concern is, and I know the intermodal is separate from all this stuff, we've got a terrible traffic problem. My big concern is, you know, what are we going to do out there if we're going to put much more houses out there? I can't hardly get on Gardner Road now to get into town. We have all these extra houses out there. Send your garden to figure out something so at least me and my wife can get to work in the morning without having to detour around, go the backroads. That's my main concern is traffic. You know, what are we going to do about the traffic? Right now, it looks like there's going to be one way in, one way out, even if it's just seventy houses starting up front, there's still, how many cars? Maybe thirty-five cars additional each morning trying to get on Gardner Road? That's my main concern.
So, right now, like when you go to work, you, you say you'll take the backroad, you, are you going east on one-hundred-and-ninety-ninth Street to take the backroads to get in town or to Moonlight or something?
Yeah, yeah, go down to Moonlight, cut across. But yeah, there's been twice, like I said, in the last month, so I want to go in Gardner, on Gardner Road, while getting down to this accident by the Shell Station. So, I have to take a right, go down the next exit to go into Gardner, which I know that's an intermodal problem. But we got a major traffic problem out there. My main concern is, where are we going to put all the cars? I know, I don't know if it's a state deal with the I-35 or whatever, city deal, I'm not sure what it is, but we got to figure out somehow. So, if we're going to have a lot more houses out there, what are we going to do with the traffic?
It's yes to both on whether it's the state and the city deal and the counties involved. It's yes to both. So, the state has to be part of it and that, that's where their hands are tied. And the council, I think just in the last meeting, actually authorized the study for traffic mitigation and revamping that, that intersection. So, but you're, you're right, it is difficult, but it is the state because it's a state highway. We can't do any of it on our own, which means time-wise.
Right. That's my, my main concern.
Absolutely.
So, we need to look into that.
We have the, the city engineer here. If there's anything you'd like to weigh in on, feel free. This is probably a good time within the public hearing.
I'll go take a seat. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Hale.
Yeah, I'm Tim McAldon, I'm the city engineer. I was hoping I'd be really walking to hear me. Yeah, Tim McAldon, I'm the city engineer. And with respect to traffic, the, the applicant has done a traffic study and per our, our access management code, and yes, there is additional traffic there. And the one thing they, the traffic study did show is that a southbound right turn lane is needed at one-hundred-and-ninety-sixth Street. So, that'll be part of the public improvements that they do on this. As far as, you know, you get up to the interchange, and yeah, we obviously have a huge problem there today, and, and has been mentioned that we have a, a design contract that is about to, actually it'll, it'll go to the next council for approval and we'll start to work on that. So, rather than have them, you know, I got information from them on how much traffic would be sent towards the interchange from this development, but rather than have them do any kind of analysis at the interchange, we're going to have our consultant who's designing the interchange wrap that in with everything they're doing there. So, unfortunately, I mean, we're, we're probably three years away from doing, or two years away from starting construction in that area. Now, we're also, we'll have our consultant do some preliminary work to see if there's any kind of improvements, minor improvements that can be made to the interchange and the ramps in the meantime. But we, so far, we haven't found any really reasonable solutions for that, but we're continuing to look, look along those lines. So, we're, we're still a ways away from a real, um, final solution on it. And as far as Gardner Road itself, it's two lanes, but the, I know there's a lot of traffic there, but it's, the amount of traffic on there today is, is well within reason for a two-lane road. Eventually, you know, that's an arterial road, and it'll eventually be probably four lanes. Our arterial standards could be three lanes, but most cases, it would be like what you see on Moonlight, Moonlight Road, four-lane divided. Again, that would be someday in the future, and they'll be driven by other, other development and, and just traffic flow in general. So, I don't know if that helps somewhat.
Tim, can you speak to any of the water issues as you've reviewed the plan?
Yes, we received a, a study for stormwater. And again, our requirement for, requirement for stormwater is that the post-development runoff flow rate can't be greater than pre-development rate. And typically, that's handled by detention. And again, we have not completely reviewed that study yet. What I saw glancing through it was, yes, there was a recommendation not to detain any water, but we'll, we'll vet that out. We'll actually have another consultant review the study. And again, we have not approved the study that they have submitted yet.
Great, thank you. While we're still on the record and in the middle of the public hearing, would anybody else like to speak before we close? Great.
I'm Lori Warren. I'm at one-nine-seven-seven-zero South Gardner Road. My first question is, is you talked about doing a, a study on the traffic close. What time do you do those? Between eight and five, or do you go between six in the morning? Because as everyone's reiterated, if you sit out there between six in the morning and eight is when it's the worst, and if you start doing your traffic studies when everyone comes to work between eight and five, you're not going to see how awful the traffic is. So, I would, I'm, I'm very concerned that you say that that's, that road can handle the traffic that's on it, because I, I work from home and I count cars and count trailer trucks, and no one believes me how many people are coming through that road. So, just would caution against saying that you've done a study or what times have you done your study to see people coming, coming on and off the roads? And if you say that something's not going to happen for two to three years, if he gets approved, when is he going to start building houses? I mean, someone's going to get killed there, so anyways. My second issue is, is that if he is approved tonight for the R3 fourplex apartments, let's say that he walks away and doesn't build the fourplexes, it's approved for R3 which are apartments, can a different style of apartment go in there? Would be my concern. Because I, I really like what he's talking about, about his fourplex apartments, but if it's approved tonight for R3 apartments, that sounded like it was kind of wide open for different apartments, and if he doesn't develop, you guys have approved for apartments to go in there. So, I'm quite concerned about a different apartment complexes coming in there. So, right, thank you.
Thank you. Any others wishing to speak before we close the public hearing? No one else coming forward? I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion to close the public hearing made by Freeman with a second Brady. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with all in favor. The public hearing is now closed. Commissioners, questions, comments? We've heard from citizens, which is great. Definitely have some concerns. I think we've had some good discussion dialogue. We've got the applicant here, we've got the engineer here. So, Heath, I'll maybe start down on this end. What questions do you have? Comments?
Yeah, a little bit. So, you know, one of the things that Ms. Warren and, and Mr. Hamilton talked about was the concerns within R3 zoning and what happens with that. As I see it as a planning commissioner, it is one of the calculated risks that we have to take with something like this, because as you look at it, Mr. Burkdahl talked about, you know, a plan, I think that is... Because as you look at it, Mr. Burdolph talked about, you know, a plan I think that is needed with the second tier of, of housing for an aging population that might still want to stay in Gardner but wants to take those amenities on. We can't accommodate that without R3. So we can't, we can't, we either have to say no to that type of development and deny the rezoning, or we have to rezone it with the expectation there. And it does leave us in a spot where someone could bail on that. And it's an exposure, I don't know how that we can reduce as a city to make sure that that doesn't happen. We've asked before if there's contingencies in place with the zoning based on that sort of development as proposed, but I don't know that there is. So that would be a question for, for legal friends.
From the zoning perspective, no. Your first question, you have three, three items here before you. And so you, you are in the situation where you have a, the zoning and that designation, you cannot place those conditions upon. Upon your, your plat, approval of the plats, approval of plans, you may place conditions. And so that, there's the distinction. The zoning is the, the first steps in the process. And no, that's not subject to those conditions. If things change, it may be rezoned through the same process in which it's being zoned I guess that's to just say, doesn't mean it's forever R3, but it would have to be changed through the same public hearing process and recommendation from the planning commission to the governing body.
Thank you. And so for me personally, as I look at it, when you have a sound plan, and especially when it almost, in essence, though, I hate to use that term, but it is an island zoning from the same developer where it's surrounded on three sides by the same developer, same property owner with plans. I also think that lessens the risk. So in this circumstance, we're working with the same developer with a plan that is, appears to be well thought out and, and well intentioned with a dire need from my perspective for the city. That's when I think it's appropriate to do that. From the traffic, there's nothing that we can do to hide from that. The traffic on that intersection is a disaster waiting to happen. But I personally think the worst thing that we can do is wait until it's resolved and hold everyone there hostage and in a holding pattern because of the time involved. And, and traffic will increase, but there's already a school that, that drives a lot of traffic and we, we can't wait because the intermodal forced our hand to where we're in a situation that does take time. I, I hate to say, we can't do it until, because then you're always waiting for the next piece to fall. So that, that traffic is, is an animal of the intermodal itself that the city and the state and the county are all going to tackle together. I don't know how long that's gonna be, but we can't let that stop us from what otherwise is sound development, which I think this plan is and plan is needed. So that's to address a couple of the questions, my own personal thoughts on it. The water control, I think, is an issue, but I, the studies and such, you know, you have to depend on studies when you, when you're trying to predict these things. And those are the experts that will let us know if, if there is a concern and they haven't at this point. So I have to, to, to fall back on our staff recommendations and, and those professional recommendations that those things will be accommodated. So those are my thoughts on it.
Okay, great. Tim?
First of all, I want to say thank you to our patrons who are here tonight. You're all very informed and passionate about this very difficult topic. Thank you for being engaged in, in this. We've, I've only been on the commission for just over a year and oftentimes, we do not have our community members show up for these type of issues. And so we, we applaud you and we, we've learned a lot from you. And Mr. Burdolph, is he still here? I can't.
Yeah.
There he is. And thank you as well. You helped provide some clarity on, on this whole matter and, and gave us some, some balance. I do want to echo some of the comments that, that Mr. Freeman shared with us. I, I do agree with many of those. I do have some questions though. One for Mr. Burdolph, when would you start on this project?
We're gonna start on the first part immediately, the first final plat.
Yeah. Come to the podium so we can catch you for the, the record. Thank you.
Yes, we will, we're final plating 70 lots. Actually, it's the third item tonight. So we'll start on 70 houses. So it'll probably take roughly four months to get the infrastructure streets in. And then probably start with six to eight houses. And then it's just gonna depend on what the market does. But it is starting immediately. So if I had to...
So 2018, you'd anticipate houses off and people moving in?
If, yeah, I've been working on this. I would say we're not gonna get asphalt until, you know, let's say April because of the weather. And we may, I may, if we can, get a little bit of, some foundations in before that. But if you're looking at maybe starting in April and four to five months to get the first houses built, you're not gonna get anybody in there until probably first of September. And then I would say, just getting these things started, that's gonna be probably six. I would say by the end of 2018, you would not have more, I mean, I wish we would have more, but probably not gonna have more than six occupants there through the end of 2018. And then figuring conservatively, one a month would put us at 12 throughout 19. If it goes to two a month, it would be 24. So through, through 2019. Again, I just don't know. Part of the, part of the site is perfect for development because it has excellent access. I know we're talking about traffic, but it has visibility and access from the interstate. But it, there's also a grade school right there. The part that a little bit is unknown, it's across the interstate, the first, you know, subdivision of this type across the interstate, I'm not sure how fast it's gonna go.
Can you address the buffering a little bit more? You talked about some, some fencing and, and all that along Gardner Road, I believe. But I think maybe some of our patrons were talking more on the south side. So what are your, what are your plans there? I see a tree line, I believe.
It's a little bit of a tree line. I don't know if it's that, not really full, is it?
Down along the fact there, yeah.
Is there a pretty good tree line on the south side?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think there's a good picture, Michelle.
Let's do it.
Yeah. What I, I don't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't fence it. I think people, when they come in. One thing I am gonna do, and I think this will help some, I, I think this will help. You see in some subdivisions where they put up the six foot privacy fences? A lot of the subdivisions I've built in, the higher end ones, they won't allow that. They just put it, they'll only allow a four, a four foot fence because the six foot fences end up almost defining everything. You've just got it broken up into these fences and everybody's got a different fence. So I'm not going for a fence look.
And I'm not suggesting that either. I do think some of those, the tree line that's there, it's, I mean, it's just, it's a bunch of old trees from what I saw. It'd be nice if those could be torn down and put a nice tree line along that. And I don't know how our patrons feel about that, but I think that would be much more attractive, not only to your property, but also serve as a nice buffer to, to the south.
No, I definitely agree. What I'm seeing along Gardner Road will be more of a landscaping berm type thing that you would see, you've seen, you've seen, seen those things a lot. So it'll be something, we'd probably have like Epic Landscape, you come in and design something with the subdivision monument and do like a berm and a, a big kind of a production there. On the south side, you know, berms are an easy thing to do. Do you think berms would be something that would, would help from your standpoint to keep?
Yeah, there's stuff like there's stuff to define your area, our area.
And also maybe get some elevation. So berms are really easy. I mean, that's something where you got a big site like that, you're just pushing dirt around so you can get the elevation easily. So I'm definitely open to something like that.
Just a couple, last couple, couple of things here. Any communication with the school district from the city's part or from your part in terms of how they feel about, you know, additional traffic and safety or anything like that?
Yeah, I had a, a conversation at the last meeting I was here. Do you remember the time, what, what did we do? We, the annexation meeting and the, I think he's the superintendent or there's a representative from the school district that night. And he was 100% for it. And he told me that, I sit back there and he'd come over and talk to me afterwards and he was 100% for it, wanted it in. I don't remember the guy's name.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Burdolph.
Sure.
And then just finally, just so our patrons know, whatever is decided here, we are not the final decision. This would go in front of our city council. So whatever is decided here, if you don't like what's decided, there is another venue, another opportunity for you to share yourselves.
Well, I pretty much agree with, with Commissioners Brady and Freeman. What really concerns me is obviously the traffic, but also the water. I know there's a study, but Gardner is so flat and if there's already a water problem now, it, I think that, I know there's gonna be another study, but that's, really concerns me, the water. I think it's a welcome addition to Gardner because I, over and over, I keep hearing that people are leaving Gardner because there's not that upper level house, you know, they grow out of their house. So I think it's needed at Gardner, but I echo what everybody said, I'm concerned about the traffic and I'm concerned about the water.
Okay. Brad?
Well, not to sound like a broken record, I think we all agree that traffic was a concern and water runoff was a concern. Those are the first two things I thought of when I first started looking at this. However, I also agree that the traffic problems that we have in that area and especially that intersection, while they, they may be worsened to an extent by this development or not the result of this development. And in my opinion, I think as Commissioner Freeman indicated, it's, it's not something that we should hold developers back on while we're trying to get those solutions put in place. I, I do agree it's a headache for everyone to, to work through as it's being designed and, and developed. But another aspect of looking at that is more traffic demand is going to also drive expediency on the design and construction side, potentially more so than if we didn't have a development plan for that area. At least for those outside of the city, because everyone here acknowledges the, the issues that we have, but we also have to convince the state and the county and other folks that this is a big problem. So I think that it, it'll be, the challenge is, you know, in, in the next year or two, but as that intersection gets redeveloped and as Gardner Road gets redeveloped, hopefully we can subside those issues. From the, the water perspective, they'll have to do a, you know, they're doing their, their study and they'll have to do their development plans and, and all of the detailed design work on their, their lots, which the city will ensure that they comply with our requirements to not make things worse. So that may impact, and I guess that was a question for staff, is if the results of that impact where they need retention or detention and it affects the, the layout of the lots, does that, is that something we need to be concerned about tonight? And I know we're talking about zoning first, but, and we can hold that question until we get into the plats if you want. Seems like I have one more. Oh. On the, and I didn't think to look this up before I came tonight, and hopefully you've got it at your fingertips. What does our R2 district allow? Is that only allowed duplexes? Is that why we can't have?
Detached.
It doesn't allow more than two or three family, I think, if I remember correctly.
The R2 zoning allows two different types of detached residential units and duplexes.
Okay. That's what I was thinking. I think we've talked about this in, in other areas where we have a three or fourplex that really looks like a oversized duplex and will probably fit better in an R2 than an R3, but based on how our definitions are, it doesn't work out that way. Maybe something we should look at in the future, but I don't know that I need to initiate anything on that at this point. I think my other question doesn't have to do with zoning, so I'll wait on it.
Okay. All right. I don't have any other specific comments except just to say thanks for coming out and speaking. It's really giving us the commission insight into concerns that are wrought forward and to make sure, you know, we can put in stipulations to address those concerns where we, we might have them. The, the public hearing's closed, if you want to make a, a quick comment, I don't mind that.
I'm Mary Fran, 19880 South Gardner Road. And for Mr. Bergdorf and the city, we have been told that Johnson County is widening Gardner Road. Put in an easement, five on each side, they're coming down our driveways, they will tear out, if we have plantings or trees or shrubs or any kind of monuments, they will tear that out. I don't know when that's gonna happen, but if this gentleman makes a nice entry to his subdivision, say next spring, and then the county comes through in the fall and tears that all up, I'm just, is the city in conjunction, is your side of Gardner Road on the west and the, the east side of Gardner Road would be county? So if they do do that, do you work with them to say when they're going to do it? Because they have been to our property, they've talked to us, they're taking more easements and they're gonna put a five foot on each side and a certain slope requirement and all that. And I just didn't want him to go to a lot of expense of putting his nice entry in to find out they're gonna tear it out and move everything. That's all I have to say.
Thanks for the, the concern. Yeah, that's a, definitely what noted, very well noted. Thank you for bringing that up. If we don't have other questions or comments from the commissioners on the rezoning, I will entertain a motion on the item.
I guess I did have one more thing on the rezoning. And that'll give us time to find our wording on that motion. I think Commissioner Freeman touched on it as well, but while we can't control what goes into an R3 district, we do have the review of the, the plat and plan process. So if the next two steps of what we'll look at tonight, if we approve those and then something does change in the future and, and those fourplexes don't get developed, then it will come back in front of us again for additional review and, and discussion. So while it's not a guarantee, it at least allows that additional point of contact.
Yeah. Thanks.
More questions?
We had, oh, another question? Sure, really quick, that'd be great.
Thank you. I know I took about five minutes up.
It's all right. I'm not keeping track tonight.
The question I have, and I know, I think things have changed. I spent 19 years on a planning commission here in the city of Gardner, but at one time, did they have a planned district? That's where we could designate, you know, we went in for the R2 or R3 and the man was gonna do this here, then if he changed that, he had to come back. And what that protected, the next guy that bought it, he could not come in and change everything without, and I didn't know, I mean, I'm agreeing with what he's doing. Don't get me wrong, but I just worried about the big three story apartments and filling the thing out if that next guy comes in. And the property is for sale. I don't know if you know that or not, and, and everything is for sale with price. So thank you very much.
Thank you. So was there, did you want to comment on that staff as to why we didn't? I know we have the different designations and I know our land code just changed a couple, few years ago, but did you want to comment on why we're going with the designation, you know, just the R3 versus the, the planned? Any, anything to comment on that?
Well, that's what he asked for.
Yep.
Traditional zoning district. A planned district is generally to do, to accomplish innovative development, something unusual or unique. He's doing exactly what, you know, we're asking for in our code. So there was really no need to go with a planned district. If, the only reason he would have to come back for review is if he changed the lots and the, the final plats that are approved in the future don't match with the preliminary plat that you approve now. Okay, so, you know, there are other limited building types that could go in that R3 district that's in that little core or island surrounded by the R1. The R1, of course, is very limited. So hopefully that clarifies.
That helps. Any, anyone else have, have questions? Real quick. Not all, I'll entertain a motion if anyone's ready to make one.
After a review of KZ 1702, a rezoning from a agricultural district to R1 single-family residential district and R3 garden apartment district for Tuscan Farms, parcel ID CF- residential district and R3 garden apartment district for Tuscan Farms, parcel ID CF221502-3001, CF221502-2013, CF221502-3011, 2F221502-4009, 2F221502-4007, and 2F221502-4001, located south of Nike Elementary School along South Gardner Road, and a staff report dated November 28th, 2017, the planning commission recommends the governing body approve the application.
Sorry.
We have a motion made by Freeman with a second by Austin, that after review of case Z-1702, a rezoning from A agricultural district to R1, single-family residential district and R3 garden apartment district for Tuscan Farms, parcel ID CF221502-3001, of Nike Elementary School along South Gardner Road, and a staff report dated November 28th, 2017, the planning commission recommends the governing body approve the application. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Mission carries with all in favor. Moving on to the, the next item 2B, which is PP-1707. Consider preliminary plat for Tuscan Farm, an 82.80 acre mixed residential subdivision. Staff presentation?
Thank you, ma'am chair, members of the planning commission. My name is Michelle Cricks, planner with the city of Gardner. And now we're going to touch upon the applicant's request for approval for a preliminary plat for Tuscan Farms on 82.8 acres, located south of Nike Elementary and along South Gardner Road. So, before you is a copy of the preliminary plat that the applicant has proposed, which is showing 221 lots for both single-family and the garden, garden apartment building type. 207 of those lots are proposed, proposed for the detached suburban house building type. So, those would be the lots that, in the previous case, were those in that orange that go along the north property line, out to the west, and along the south property line. 14 of the lots, which is in that center there along South Gardner Road, are proposed for the garden apartment building type. These are proposed to be maintenance provided and owner occupied units. The applicant is proposing two access points from Gardner Road into the development. You'll see one access point there just south of Nike Elementary, and then a little further to the south, there is a second entry. All roads within the subdivision are to be public roads. The drives accessing the, those quad units there in the middle are proposed to be private drives. The applicant has also proposed nine, nine tracts of land for the overall development. So, on your screen, those are the areas highlighted in green. Eight of these tracts are to be owned and maintained by the Homes Association. So, along South Gardner Road, there are landscape tracts. There's, centrally located within development is the community amenity tract, which will have a pool, which will have the clubhouse, as the developer alluded to with the previous case. And bicycle parking will be provided there as well. There's a pedestrian access track to Nike Elementary, and then there's another pedestrian access track along the west to the green space on the west. Now, tract E, which is that large area on the west side of development, which is on the left side of your screen, is proposed by the developer to be dedicated to the city of Gardner for future parks and trails. This tract is approximately 5.12 acres. It is part of the 100-year floodplain, so because it's within that floodplain, it cannot be developed. The dedication of this open space does comply with the open space goals and policies of the sub-area plan. And staff has had conversations with the city parks and rec department, and the department is supportive of this land dedication, and they plan to, in the future, construct a 10-foot pedestrian bike hike trail that'll eventually connect to the north when the north develops and then on to the south and west as well, so we can continue to grow the trail system within the city. The development is proposed to be developed within three phases. The first phase is going to be that area just, just south of the north property line there. The second phase will include the, those quads, the more estate-sized lots along the south property line, and then some of the traditional single-family lots through the middle of the development. And then the final phase will be the remaining single-family lots at the south and west of the development. Staff is recommending the planning commission approve case PP-1707, a preliminary plat for Tuscan Farms, with the parcel IDs noted on the screen, located south of Nike Elementary and South Gardner Road. Again, I'm going to stop here to allow the planning commission an opportunity to discuss and ask questions and make a recommendation. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Michelle. Commissioners, anything on the prelim? Any questions? Down on my left, Heather, Tim?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. Tim?
Ms. Bergdolph, is that true? The property is up for sale?
Technically, it's, it's.
What is it?
Well, it is. It has been for sale for a long time, and we, the only reason why it's even still for sale is because I was trying not to cut the listing realtor out until he ran out of his term, but we raised the price way up. And so, actually, the only thing we were waiting on was this, and it's, it's, it's getting, it's going to be done. The listing will be off. The only thing that will be listed after that will be possibly lots. We're kicking around whether we're going to build all the houses, but it will be going into sale as advertising for lots, but as, not as the, not as the property.
And then it was also brought up with the county, state, maybe expanding Gardner Road. If they do that, that's going to tear up east side of, of your property. Is, would that happen?
I think they are, you would know more about it than I do, I think, but have they already figured that in with the right of ways that they're at now? Do you think we're, we're okay on that?
They're, I know, if they're needing more right of way, they, they've obtained it through that project. Essentially, they're just, they're adding shoulders and, which will move ditches out a little wider to, it's just a, it's, it's not a roadway improvement, it's a safety improvement.
But that's only in the unincorporated, correct?
Well, the project goes all the way up to almost 191st Street.
191st. Oh, it does. Okay, so it is coming into the city limits, but it's a county project?
Right. But they're, but they're not doing the widening within Gardner. They're only doing the widening with the shoulders on the, in the unincorporated part of the project.
Which wouldn't affect this property on your eastern side?
Yeah.
Because it's in the city now.
Right. When it, but when they started developing plans, it was not.
So, it may still be part of those plans, I see.
Right. And, and I've been in touch with the county and will continue to, to keep them informed where we're at. So, I mean, that was a good point, you know, so that we're coordinating with what's going on with, with what they're doing.
Well, I think the, the big question with that is, is their current right of way wide enough to accommodate those future developments without having to redo all of their current designs? And if we're approving the preliminary plat that shows those right of ways, then it may be good to know that.
Larry's working on it.
Okay. Thank you.
We're, we're checking on the additional right of way with, for you, that we did request, so we should probably have that covered, but we'll give you the footage in a minute.
Okay.
Thank you.
Why she's checking, and I don't know if this should be part of the motion or not, but I'm pretty passionate about a berm or tree line on that south side. Would that need to be part of the motion?
I think we could do that with the final, because we can maybe, and, and people might do that just the final plat. We haven't even got the development plan, which that will come with another staff.
Right.
Ron, you still, Ron's still there?
Yeah.
Ron, what, from your perspective, tree line, berm, what?
That was the Warrens, but he can probably.
What they're talking about, extending the road out there.
No, now I'm kind of moving on now. We'll talk about the buffer on the, on the south end of this property.
Oh, okay.
Lee and Laurie.
So, are you thinking tree line, are you thinking?
I like the idea of these berm with your trees and stuff on the berm, like they do. That adds, you know, height to the whole situation.
And does the city, Larry?
Well, I would defer to the, to city engineer in this, but it's, we have to be careful when you start burning property, you block water, and we can't change the natural flow of the waterway. So, even though we may berm it so that we raise the trees up, there still has to be the natural water movement that's required for the properties to move where it's supposed to go. So, it would just be taken into account that you would, you may have a berm, but it would be a berm that allows the flow of water through it. It's not going to block the water flow.
Yeah.
When the watershed is finished there with the, all of the natural drains, you know, shedding through all the streets, actually, that's putting all of, everything that drains on us right now. Everything is going to go to that corner, the way I looked at it on the prints, if I'm correct. I think, wasn't that right, we went to where we thought we were getting a containment area that showed all of the storm sweaters going into that one point?
Well, a lot of the development is draining off to the west. We talked about that, remember?
About, about one-third of the whole district will go west.
No, I think Mark's indicated more like two-thirds.
Wasn't that on the, on the sheet you gave me that you showed the amount of water would go which way and stuff?
Well, he was showing you on the, on the plat.
Yeah.
Which parts of it would go west. And then the part that does come south, your question is, there's already a future flood lane, flood plain there. That's existing.
There's a flood plain there, correct. And that's where the water is all directed to that flood plain.
There's a, a big, you know, track that's reserved for that flood plain and for the water to go there from that part of the development.
But once that water goes there, if I'm correct, it would build up and then run right across our area into the creek.
Well, we're not sure that it's going to be designed to build up or if it's just designed to runoff. Is that right, Tim?
Yeah, I'm not sure if I understand the, the question, but, but, I mean, typically, yeah, we take the water to a point.
Yeah.
Detain it and then release it from that point.
But you weren't putting a containment area in there, the way I understood by the sheets, that, that's not your study, but the state made a study on it, that you didn't need a containment area. Is that's correct?
That, I don't know.
I think the engineer we talked to the other day said there would not be a containment area, didn't have to be by your sheet. But with all the, the storm sweaters dumping in that one spot, I'd be glad to show you photos of that area right there with just the normal rains. And it, it comes all the way up to there with, with the rains that we've had past. And actually, a little more water, what it's going to do is going to, I have a well down there on the other side of the creek, and the water come, the last time come up was in this far of the well. And I'm concerned with, with pushing the, probably another 40 acres of water into that one corner, it's really going to come up then. So, that, that was my only concern is just on that part. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead. Does she have something for us, real quick?
Um, back to the buffer.
Uh-huh.
There is going to be a buffer required between the R3 district and the R1. So, even though there may not, I mean, we're not requiring a buffer on the single, back of the single-family homes to the other single-family homes. I mean, that's not what's in our code, but he will have to buffer those quads from the other single-family homes around them with one tree per 50 linear feet, one shrub per 10 linear feet, and at least eight-foot perimeter depth of the buffer.
Thank you. I don't think we have anything else at, at this point.
They're working on the right of way.
They're still working on the right of way. Go ahead.
Yeah, it looks like there's a, sorry, it looks like on the, on the plat that they're going to be dedicating about 60 feet of right of way on the Gardner side. So, he'll have this, he'll be dedicating that right of way for future road expansion.
Okay. Great. That answered, that answered the?
That's a lot of right of way.
Right of way question? I think it was?
It is.
Well, that actually meets our arterial standard. So, that's, we ask for 60 feet so that in the future, when it gets widened to four lanes or whatever, then we have enough right of ways. And that's our, our standard would be 60 foot each side.
Okay.
And then his landscaping would be, of course, beyond that. So, hopefully the county won't be anywhere near his landscaping. But it's a very good point, we're glad they brought it up.
Yeah, absolutely. Definitely. Okay, I think that was the last outstanding question or?
No.
No? Brad had another one?
Kind of going back to the one that I tabled earlier. If the water study does find that they need detention or retention in areas that aren't currently shown and it affects the layout of the lots, is that a concern for us approving the preliminary and/or final plats?
They'll come back with a revised preliminary plat and then a revised final plat if they had to make those lot adjustments.
Okay, and is there, is that, I guess, is that a requirement of the development plan, that they finish that study and implement those things or?
There is no development plan since this is not a planned district. So, it's all we have a rezoning, a preliminary plat, and finally, there's, there's no development plan. So, we would just be going with the plat.
Okay. So, I guess my question now is, why don't we have that answer before the final plat? Isn't that something we require and need?
It was my understanding from engineering that they will look at those along with the construction plans for the roadways, because that's how stormwater is managed, right? So, when, when they look at that, construction plans, they'll be looking at that. And then we look at it again for each lot as those lots are developed, with the grading of each lot.
Well, I would just add that there, there actually is a, a tract showing detention on it, which according to what we've seen with their new study, they wouldn't be using it, but there, there actually is a tract at the southeast corner set aside for detention if it's needed.
Okay. I guess, okay. If this is a normal process, that's fine. It just concerns me that we would approve something with the possibility of it changing in a week or two when the reports done. I guess my next, I had one more question. Is there not a requirement or was there any discussion of providing sidewalk along South Gardner Road, that frontage? I know it wouldn't really go anywhere right now, but I would envision that eventually they'll, they would connect it to the elementary and possibly beyond once that road's widened and, and developed more. Our standards have certain requirements for sidewalks along different types of roads, but I didn't look that specific one up before tonight.
Generally, on arterials, we don't build the sidewalks until the road is built. It's just the expense and having to do it when you still have open ditches, it makes it difficult. And then, so, it'd be difficult to build it and then have it in place so that, you know, you wouldn't be tearing it out again when you built, when you built the arterial.
Okay. And, and that makes sense to me, to an extent, except that it's already an arterial without plans for expanding it, set and stowed. So, if we're building a brand new road, I would understand that, but is there? So if we're building a brand-new road, I would understand that, but is there, I mean, I, I guess, just trying to, what do our standards usually require for, if this wasn't, if this was at a different parts of our street? One of the things that I have some concern about just holistically as our commission is that we, we remember to think that, yeah, right now that's a ways out there, and it's, you know, surrounded by openness, but 10, 20 years from now, it'll be surrounded by development. And if we don't put the infrastructure and the plans in place now, it will affect what it looks like in 10, 15, 20 years. And so that's why I, one of the things I try to keep in my mind as we review these is, is as far as everything from building types and exteriors and all kinds of fun stuff, but.
I think it's a sound concern, the one thing I'll point out with this plan, and it is in phase one, is tract, I think, I think it's a D that is on one of the corners to provide access to the elementary school through the, the neighborhood itself. But you're right, but we, I, I, the other piece that we, we have to, to fight through is, is where we already have that set up. And if you think about, um, some of the other, like 167th Street where they have access, there's, there's no sidewalks along a great part of those, and it's the berms and the landscaping. So then where's the precedent at, and when do you change that, and when, because don't dictate it? So that's the hard thing, it's a, it's a great point, it's just how do we say, now's the time we have to do it? And what means do we have to do so? And I don't know that we have any means to do so though as a commission from the code itself.
Well, and that was my question, was what does the code require for sidewalks along arterial roads? And the one thing that just popped into my mind was over off of Moonlight, those, I don't remember if it was R3, um, the new flexes, four flexes, townhouses that we reviewed a year or two ago. We made them put a sidewalk along Moonlight, which would be very similar to this other than it may not be a ditch at that point, it may be a.
There, there was a, forgive me. That particular aspect is a very good point, sir, that you bring up. The 183rd and Moonlight intersection, uh, when the Willow Springs original concept was built, which this final piece was being done along White and Moonlight and 183rd now, the, uh, there was a 10-foot wide trail proposed for Willow Springs on the, what would be the north side of 183rd. Willow Chase, which is the new one, but Willow Springs was the original. That was not constructed because of the, and it says in the planning commission minutes, until such time as the road is improved. And that part is just now being done this many years later. So it is, it is a timing issue, much like Tim said earlier. Sometimes you, you plan for that, but our arterial requirements, when we build a road, takes into account the fact that sidewalks are needed. And so it's that point in time which the sidewalks are designated to where they'd be and how wide they'll be. So it's when the road construction takes place. We do try and take it into account in the plating process when we talk about getting enough road right-of-way to make sure that the right-of-way is there to do that at a later point in time. And that's why we're getting a 60-foot right-of-way at this point in time, because that is their half of that 120-foot total that we look for when we build a future arterial roadway. Does that help?
Good.
I would just address your question of what kind of sidewalk would be required. And that's all dependent on what kind of arterial street we call that, because we have four different types of arterial streets. And so some of them have five-foot sidewalks and some of them have more. And we're just in the process of trying to designate roads as certain types so that we can, you know, nail that down in the future. And, and typically, we would have the developer put that in right now, you're right. And that's a very, very good concern. And I think that just being our first development across I-35 and not having all our, you know, detailed plans in place, we're just kind of hedging on that for now, but.
Go ahead, some of that.
Yeah, just one other comment, Michelle reminded me, thanks, Michelle. The, um, the excise tax is intended to go for arterials. So even though we're not saying, okay, you're going to build a sidewalk with this project, they're putting money towards the construction of that future sidewalk and the whole arterial network.
That's a good point, yep, thanks. Anything else staff would like to add? There's no other questions from the commissioners. I'd continue with the entertainment of emotion on, um, the preliminary plat.
After review of case PP-1707, a preliminary plat for Tuscan Farms parcel IDs, uh, geez, as printed on page 12 of the planning commission materials, locate on the south side of Nike Elementary School along South Gardner Road. A preliminary plat dated November 15th, 2017, and staff report dated November 28th, 2017. Planning commission approves the application after finding all applicable requirements have been met with the following condition, that berms be placed on the south side of the property as allowed by water lines. Water drainage.
As allowed by the drainage study.
Okay.
As allowed by the drainage study, and we want that to go with the prelim plat? That this is fine with the, you guys are fine with the motion that we're making with the potential stipulation on the preliminary plat to add berms?
I don't know where we can on the preliminary plat, it doesn't have landscaping stipulations.
Yeah, I think that would need to come with the, uh.
At what point would we do that?
The final, because we've got one more, yeah, we've got one more, uh, item to review yet. Um, but, but that's only part of one phase. I don't even know if we're at that part yet for the, the south side of the.
Yeah, that would be your third phase, not the first phase.
Okay, yeah, and we're only looking at the first phase. Okay, so yeah, removing that condition, okay, I think that's, that's a good, that would be the correct way to proceed. Okay, all right.
Second.
Okay, great, all right. So we have a motion made by Brady and a second by Roberts. Said after review of case PP-17-07, a preliminary plat for Tuscan Farms with parcel IDs, as noted on page 12 of the staff report, located, uh, south of Nike Elementary School along South Gardner Road. A preliminary plat dated November 15th, 2017, and staff report dated November 28th, 2017. The planning commission approves the, approves the application after finding all applicable requirements have been met. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with all in favor. And now we'll take a look at, um, item 2C then, which is the FP-17-07. Consider a final plat for Tuscan Farms, contains 70 single-family lots, and it looks like this is the, the phase, the phase one. It's where it looks like the northern edge, but staff will, uh, give us the presentation, we can ask questions.
Thank you, Madam, Madam Chairman, members of the planning commission. My name is Michelle Cricks, Planner of the City of Gardner. And, uh, this evening we'll be discussing Tuscan Farms' first plat, which is a final plat for Tuscan Farms, which is the first phase of the development located south of Nike Elementary and along South Gardner Road. So the graphic in front of you is going to show you which of those lots are going to be impacted by this first plat, which are outlined in blue. You'll notice only five of the six parcels will be impacted by this first plat. So in front of you is, um, showing what that, what the area of the first plat is. The plat is for 70 single-family lots along the north property line, which is adjacent to Nike Elementary and the vacant land there along the north. Um, within this plat, uh, there are five tracts of land, uh, proposed. Four of them are to be owned and maintained by the Homes Association, which include the landscape tracts there, um, along, uh, South Gardner Road, which the developer alluded to in an earlier, um, case. Uh, the community amenity there, tract C, which is on this plat, kind of along that south there. And, um, uh, the pedestrian access of tract D from the development to Nike Elementary. Now included with this plat, and as we discussed with the last case, that there's noted to be land dedicated to the city of Gardner for parks and rec space. A small portion of that land will be dedicated at this time with this plat, which is highlighted in green on your graphic there up at the very northwest corner there. So this is, um, a street tree plan provided by the applicant for the development. So you'll notice there that, uh, the applicant has provided for, uh, trees, uh, that comply with the code. Um, he's provided site triangles on there to show that, uh, we don't have any trees located within those site triangles. Uh, now, um, tract C, uh, tract C is actually, um, proposed to be zoned R3. And because we have as, uh, R3 zoning adjacent to R1 zoning, they are required to, uh, put buffer requirements, um, between the two zoning designations, which the applicant has provided. Uh, within this first phase, the applicant has provided approximately 115 trees. And it was noted by staff that, um, the applicant did, um, uh, need to review the requirement and meet the requirements for tree diversity. So the, uh, section 17 dash, or, uh, oh eight dot oh three oh of the Gardner Municipal Code refers to that there are three requirements necessary for tree diversity for this amount or this quantity of trees. And they have to provide at least two genus and at least five species of trees, and no more than 20% of any, uh, one species provided on the plan. It was noted by staff that the applicant has provided 29% of the autumn blaze maples and 28% autumn gold ginkgos, uh, 14.7% of red buds, 11% honey locusts, and 16% of the patriot elms. Um, in order for the tree diversity to comply with the ordinance reductions in the autumn blaze maple and the autumn gold ginkgos will be, uh, required. And, uh, the applicant can actually just offset that by reducing the numbers of those trees and maybe increasing the number of another, uh, tree species that he's already provided on the plan. And staff has stipulated, um, that this requirement, um, should be met. Uh, staff is recommending the planning commission approve, uh, the final plat, FP-1707 for Tuscan Farms' first plat, uh, with the parcel IDs noted on the screen, located south of Nike Elementary along South Gardner Road to the governing body with the following conditions. The preliminary plat, which is PP-1707, is to be approved prior to the release of the final plat for recording. Uh, prior to the recording of the final plat, an excise tax in the amount of $199,561.28 shall be paid to the city. Construction plans for any utilities, infrastructure, public facilities shall meet all technical specifications and public improvement plans shall be submitted and approved prior to the release of the plat for recording. And per the Gardner Municipal Code 17 dot oh eight dot oh three oh C, the applicant shall revise the street tree plan to show no more than 20% of overall quantity of trees shall be one-tree species prior to the release of the plat for recording, and recommends the governing body accept dedication of right-of-way and easements. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Michelle. I don't know if the applicant has anything they'd like to add, um, with the, the final plat discussion?
I really don't, uh, I take questions, I really don't, I think we've already talked about it, talked about it all.
Yeah, just thought I'd give you an opportunity if there's anything else you wanted to comment on. Okay, commissioners, questions, comments on, um, the, on the plat?
I have one for, for staff.
Okay.
And it, it, it's not necessarily specific to this one other than the question applies to this one, I've seen it on other ones. Is the official plat that gets to be submitted, is the surveyor seal signed and dated? Or are we receiving those without signatures and dates on the professional seals?
No, the plat that gets recorded is signed and sealed, um, by the, um, by the surveyor, by the engineer.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because we usually, or often see them without signatures, and that doesn't mean anything, so, okay, that's all I had.
Okay, if we don't have other questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion on this item.
After review of FP-17-07, a final plat for Tuscan Farms' first plat, parcel IDs, 2F221502-4009, and 2F221502-4007, located south of Nike Elementary School along South Gardner Road. A final plat dated November 15th, 2017, and staff report dated November 28th, 2017. The planning commission recommends approval, uh, of the application to the governing body provided the following conditions are met. Condition one, preliminary plat PP-17-07 shall be approved prior to the release of the final plat, FP-17-07 for recording. Two, prior to recording of the final plat, an excise tax in the amount of $199,561.28 shall be paid to the city. Three, the construction plans for any utilities, infrastructure, public facilities shall meet all technical specifications and public improvement plans shall be submitted and approved prior to the release of the plat for recording. And four, per Gardner Municipal Code 17 dot zero eight dot zero three zero C, the applicant shall revise the street tree plan to show no more than 20% of overall quantity of trees shall be any one-tree species prior to release of the plat for recording, and recommends the governing body accept dedication of right-of-way and easements.
Second.
We have a motion made by Austin with a second by Freeman that after review of FP-17-07, a final plat for Tuscan Farms' first plat, parcel ID CF221502-3001, CF221502-2013, CF221502-3011, 2F221502-4009, and 2F221502-4007, located south of Nike Elementary School along South Gardner Road. A final plat dated November 15th, 2017, and staff report dated November 28th, 2017. The planning commission recommends approval of the application to the governing body provided the following conditions are met, items one through four, as stated in the page five of the staff report, and recommends the governing body accept dedication of right-of-way and easements. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with all in favor. Thank you guys very much, that was a lot of good discussion on item two. Okay, uh, we've got a couple of text amendments. Let's start with item 3A, TA-17-03. Hold a public hearing and consider a proposed text amendment to the Gardner Land Development Code, section 17 dot 10, sign standards regarding wall signs in residential districts. We have a presentation this evening before we open the public hearing.
Good evening, commissioners, yes we do, Kelly Drake, Chief Planner. Kelly Drake Woodward, sorry, been a long night. All right, um, so you may remember that this, um, issue first came up from co-compliance activities pertaining to this sign that you see in the picture, which is a large permanent wall sign in a residential district. And so, uh, at your September 26th, uh, meeting, that was discussed, and staff proposed that the planning commission initiate, uh, potential test, text amendment so that staff could research the issue, look at regulations in other jurisdictions, and consider whether a wall, amendment of wall sign standards was advisable, considering that public input and the need to maintain regulations that are content neutral. And also thinking about neighborhood character. So you did that, initiated the text amendments. I'm going to remind you of the content neutrality, uh, standard that we used when drafting the Gardner Land Development Code. And that was to reduce our legal risk associated with enforcement based on the Supreme Court case, Reed versus Town of Gilbert. And in that case, thus, they'd established that content. And in that case, they'd established that content-based regulation is unconstitutional and invalid unless that government regulation can pass the strict scrutiny test and is narrowly tailored to achieve a compelling government interest. So I hopefully put enough explanation of that in your staff report. If we can revisit that with our attorney here if we need to, but we still have that goal of reducing risk for the city. So the pertinent issues per the public comment are listed here. I'm going to go through them one by one, starting with, should Gardner differentiate art content from other content and exempt art content? And if so, what is art? So first of all, here's our current definition of sign and also our current definition of wall sign. And the underlying words are what staff used to make a determination that this object in particular is a sign, per our code, and was subject to our sign regulations, which you might remember, it did not meet because it's, first of all, a permanent wall sign, which is not allowed. And even as a temporary sign, it would be too large. Okay, so we did check with the attorney before we made that determination, and they were all in agreement with our determination. So the difficulty in attempting to define and then exempt art or decoration from that regulation is that it's really subjective, those terms, when I started looking at them. And so we kind of prefer to just define signs, and then if that decorative feature or that thing that's created doesn't meet the sign definition, then that regulation just wouldn't apply. So I think it's our attorney's opinion that we really don't regulate art or decoration currently, anyway. And then trying to figure out whether we could exempt a sign that has writing on it. We don't, you know, we can't exempt some writing and not other writing. You know, we can't get into that content. So there's really not a very good content-neutral way for us to feasibly exempt that sign from regulation. We can come up with anything there. The next question that was asked, and this pertains to temporary signs, is if we can have two signs, eight square feet each, why can't we have one sign 16 square feet? And this all has to do with, you know, sign size and community aesthetics and neighborhood character. This is what would typically, what would be allowed on a typical 70-foot-wide residential lot in our code at this time. So Gardner is really the only jurisdiction that I looked at the sign regulations for that specifically does address temporary wall signs for single-family and duplex uses. Typically, wall signs are not, you know, addressed for single-family and duplex uses in these codes. So this is in addition to the allowances that we also have for temporary freestanding signs. And then we do allow some permanent wall signs, the small ones, two square feet or less. And other jurisdictions do as well. Olatha allows one square foot. Oakland Park, one to four. Lawrence, two to four. And Lenexa, one to six. And it depends on the content, so they're still kind of stuck in the content-based regulation thing. But those are the ranges. So typically jurisdictions allow for permanent freestanding signs only for subdivision entrances, multifamily uses, institutions, things like that, but not for single-family or duplex uses. So I think we allow ample opportunity for communications is the point of this. And I think our sign allocations are in line with what you'll see in most other communities. So the staff finding on this issue is that, based on our limited research that's reflected in Table Two, it supports the conclusion that numerous or large signage is generally not consistent with the character of low-density residential areas. Per sign maximums are generally implemented to ensure that any one sign is of appropriate scale for residential neighborhoods, which would generally be unobtrusive for homes on individual lots. And combining two such signs would not support the goals of our sign standards to encourage the appropriate scale design and placement of signs for them to be appropriately conspicuous, visible, and legible. These are all things we can discuss further. And the last issue was creating that balance between constitutional freedom of expression and community aesthetic concerns, which haven't shown to be a substantial government interest as far as judicial review. And staff's finding is basically, based on the information that was presented, again, sign area allocations for wall signs in residential districts are consistent with other jurisdictions and provide that appropriate balance between constitutional freedom of expression and community aesthetic concerns. So therefore, staff is not recommending any amendments for area allocations for wall signs in residential district. And this is where I did make a recommendation is that maybe we fine-tune the sign definition. I wanted to perhaps simplify it. Kind of drives me crazy currently. The word "device" is in there twice. It's just a little thing. But I was worried that the last sentence of the current definition, which is in strike-through red up above there, could be content-based because you actually have to read that object to tell if it talks about any of those things. I don't know that that's a real concern, and our city attorney can address that if you'd like. So the recommended definition below is what's in your staff report. Basically, it changes it to what is defined as communication, which in the dictionary definition is usually communicating, something that communicates information and using graphic elements. So I looked up all those terms in dictionary, since it's not my intent to define all those terms in our code. And this is what I settled upon. Today, we're discussing these definitions and... I just always call you Chuck. I'm sorry, but...
Chuck, online.
You know, we had some suggestions. If we do want to keep with the current definition, we could change that one word to "communication" instead of "announcement" and "advertisement", because I didn't want to get into arguing about whether someone intends to announce or intends to advertise or if it's just in the nature of that. But so that's an option. Or he suggested that removing the part in strike-through there in the revised recommended definition that says that is affixed, too painted or represented directly or indirectly upon a building or other outdoor surface. He was worried, I think, that that would not be inclusive of things on posts. It wasn't clear what that was. And we determined we really don't need that, anyway, because the definitions for wall signs and freestanding signs actually talk about where those signs are. So the subtype definitions deal with that, anyway. So we can jump back and forth on those definitions, depending on what you want to do. Okay.
The one comment I would have with regard to the definitions. The language which directs attention to an object, product, place, activity, person, institution, organization, or business are generally, those are well-used, standard language that's derived from court cases, recommended by the IMLA, International Municipal Lawyers Association, as, and they're derived from examples in case law of acceptable language. We can change, I know Ms. Woodward's concern and her, which my mother would love, hatred of use of the same word twice in a definition or the use of a definition of the word itself within the definition. While our Land Development Code, municipal code, generally uses common, ordinary definitions. And so the first thought is, hey, let's look what Webster says definition is. The terms contained within these definitions are often legal terms of art. There have been multiple cases about them. And so it is difficult, and one must act with care in changing them. That would be my only concern with regard to changing it. My initial concern with regard to that is affixed, too painted or represented directly or indirectly upon a building or outdoor surface. I have concluded, and I told, this is my thing, I told Kelly that I had a concern about that not addressing freestanding signs. But I think that that is addressed by other outdoor surface, and I was over-cautious with regard to that. So the current definition covers the issue. You could lose the terms in advertisement or announcement, replace them with name, identification, description, display, or illustration, which would make it broader. Do not have to have the terms advertisement or an announcement. But I would suggest designed or intended direct attention to the face of and then that list of things.
I don't know if that's clear as mud, or if we're all...
Well, I'm following a little bit. I think we'll, we definitely want to probably have some conversation. Knowing this is a public hearing, let's go through the formality of opening the public hearing. If anyone wishes to speak on this item, please come forward. State your name and address for the public record and be heard.
Hold up, Brad.
I don't believe we're going to have anybody wishing to speak this evening, so I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion to close the public hearing made by Brady with a second by Austin. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with all in favor. The public hearing is now closed. Okay, all right.
I just want to point out one more thing before the discussion.
Yeah, discuss.
Is whatever definition you agree on, if you do decide to change the definition, I would recommend that you include these findings along with your change or some findings along with your reasoning.
Yeah, good point. Thanks, Kelly.
Either way, I guess where I'm at, I had a bunch of notes and questions and thoughts and ideas, but I think it all boils down to I tend to agree with getting rid of the an advertisement or announcement unless that's our intended, unless that's our intent. And if that is our intent, then I would tend to question the application of this other case because I don't understand what it's announcing or advertising. But...
So Brad, would you be comfortable? Because there's a couple of chunks in here. When I'm looking at the recommended motion, I'm going to come back around to Heath as well because it just kind of dawned on me. We've got a couple of things going on here. So really, what we're looking at to change is, according to staff's recommendation after Planning Commission discussion, would you be comfortable, are you kind of feeling like you would agree with staff's recommendation of the revised recommended definition, kind of the second portion below that's showing on the screen? And secondly, are you then okay with, or do you have any questions or thoughts on? Because we want to base following findings, right? And staff did a really good job of putting together following findings that we don't need to change anything else. So it's kind of like a several-folded motion that we want, we need to entertain tonight. So regarding the sign definition, Brad, are you, what's your thoughts on what we're seeing here on the screen after discussion questions? You know, are you leaning towards agreeing with the revised recommended definition that's showing on the screen with some strikeout? Or are you okay with the recommended motion in red as printed in the staff report or something totally different? Just trying to get a quick feeling from each of the Commissioners.
My initial thought was the revised recommended definition sounds great. The more I think about it, and one of the question, one of the issues that I had previously, and I didn't know how to get around it, whether we use the word "communication" or the text as currently in the definition, is everything, almost everything, is intended to communicate something. All our work is developed generally with, you know, that's why they have names and stuff. Being a non-art person, that's my technical terms. But so now, after our discussion, I'm starting to question whether, which is a better approach? Do we use "communication" or do we use the draws attention to an object, product, place, activity, person, institution, organization, or business, which is more specific than "communication" in general? I think I can probably go either way on the issue. I don't know what the right answer is.
From the legal...
Go ahead. No, go ahead.
I apologize. I will tell you that which directs attention to an object, product, place, activity, person, institution, organization, or business is the more, is the legally-vetted term. Communication is shorter. It is more concise, is not the legally-vetted term. Cannot tell you that there are cases out there saying communication is fine. That other language is. After the Reed case, legal commentators, IMLA's proposed would be to include the term "the sign face" amongst that list of things, which directs attention to the sign face or an object, product, place, activity, person, institution, organization, or business.
So I guess I'm, I would say, and I hate to, I don't know. I appreciate the discussion. I think all the different aspects and avenues have been helpful to me. Based on all the discussion, I would probably do the following. And I can make it as a motion if you want, but I figured other people have things to say first.
Yeah, I want to make sure we get around. But I was just kind of getting your, you know, getting your thoughts out there as far as...
Right.
Yeah.
So I would take our current definition. I would strike the second device. I would add directing attention to after or which is in the nature of... I would add directing attention to after, or which is in the nature of, I would strike an advertisement or announcement which directs attention to, and I would add the sign face prior to an object.
So you're, it seems like you're...
If you would follow that.
Yeah, you're kind of with...
It's a hybrid between both approaches.
Right, kind of with Heath on the initial, you know, hey, I think we've got a good definition going, sounds like you're kind of in the same vein, a little bit of some modification. And sticking with, you know, staff's recommendation of no additional changes to the other provisions as far as sign standards, it sounds like we've got some good findings of fact. Heath, I'll just ask you, that was part of the other question I didn't really get to ask you. Were you comfortable with the staff findings of fact?
I stick, I don't, I don't think it's broken. I don't think we need to try to fix it.
Okay.
That really is where I stick on it. I think it, I think it working was applied correctly.
Okay, okay, I'm good with that. Brad, you kind of fill in the same way with Heath, you know, it's working as designed, maybe a few minor changes as you've recommended. Anything else you want to add?
No.
Okay. Okay. Tori, what's your thoughts?
I wouldn't change the current definition. I agree with Heath. I think it was one incident that has prompted this, and the sign code had just been revamped, basically, before I got back on planning mission. I'm fine with the current definition.
And comfortable with the other findings of fact?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Tim?
It's a matter of like, definition used because of interpretation, and then the enforcement piece, you know, that's the hard part on the city's part. I just want to make sure, because this was returned to us from the city council, correct? So I just want to make sure, we can wrap this thing up today, so then come back to this again. So if we go with a recommendation that's spread right here, our staff report, is that going to suffice the city council?
I know.
I know it's hard to predict.
I know.
I wasn't at the city council meeting here, to their return back to us, so...
We don't have a lot of citizens in the audience tonight to come talk about it. So I don't know, I'm just gauging on public...
I can't, I can't, obviously, I can answer that question. I would say in terms of your current definition, although I understand Ms. Woodward's concerns with regard to changing it, I think the current, the current definition is legal. You can update it slightly by changing advertisement or announcement to name, identification, description, or display. But I think that you're, you're okay.
Good. Appreciate that input. Does that help, Tim? Any other questions?
Yeah, I'll just kind of wait for the motion to hear what we finally end up with.
I think we're all kind of in the same age.
I think the one thing that is important to note from the, and I, as we've gotten into the weeds on the language here, Mr. Woodward's presentation covered in detail. This initial question came up about a specific sign. Whether we pick the current definition, revised current definition, the revised recommended definition, or the IMLA's draft, which is only a draft, model definition, the same answer would apply to the particular sign.
Yep.
Display, or what have you.
It's still in violation.
It's in violation.
Correct.
The end.
But if they would, but they could have it up temporarily. There is a provision permitting process for three months or whatever, I forget what it was.
If they made it the right size.
They made it smaller, cut it in half.
Yeah.
Yep.
Brad make a motion.
Yeah, we'll entertain a motion unless we've debated long enough to think.
I recommend that after review of the staff report dated November 28, 2017, the planning commission recommends that no action be taken on the definition of sign in Article 17 dot 02 dot 010 in the Gardner Land Development Code.
Second. Yeah, go ahead.
Well, the governing body didn't even ask you to work on the sign definition, right? They wanted you to address wall signs in residential districts. So there's kind of two parts to the recommended motion that's in there now. So if you don't think there should be a change to the sign definition, you probably don't even have to mention that, but...
Just report back to the city council that...
We do have to...
Take no action.
We do have to address the concerns they sent it back for, for wall signs in residential district, which is the second part of the motion, which says, you know, take no action, et cetera. The part after the definition, it says with no recommended amendment to the provisions of blah, blah, blah pertaining to wall signs in residential districts based on the findings. And the findings are just in there so they know what your decision's based on. So anyway, I just wanted to clarify that, and you make whatever recommendation you want, or motion you want.
So it's like no action on both, because, yeah, I see what she's talking about. You see that too, Heath, where it's like we've got the definition and the sign, and then the provisions to the sign standards. So it's like no action on both based on findings. But I guess is kind of where I would go with it.
Do we, since this was introduced as a text amendment, do we have to recommend denial of the text amendment? Is it going to go to the council either way? So we have to recommend denial of the text amendment as presented, and have no recommended amendment for the rest down below there?
Or is it no changes?
Well, you can make a motion, we could, you can vote against us. That would be a signal to the city council.
If we make a motion with specific findings, do those findings, by being clearly defined in such a manner, open it up to more interpretation for any party to take different actions on it? And challenge what the findings are, that our opinion was based upon? Do I need to mention that there's any findings at all, and that there are no recommended amendment to the provisions in Article 17 dot 10 sign standards?
I would recommend that you make a finding that the current standards support the goals contained within Chapter 17 sign standards, as, either as stated or listed. Upon review of that, that you believe that those goals are appropriate, make the findings that they're appropriate, and the current definitions and code sections support and advance those goals and community standards.
Okay, I withdraw my initial motion. So we'll pull that off of the table.
Okay, all right.
And now, we will...
Don't read them.
Wait for someone to do something besides me? I like that answer. You like dinner?
That's fast.
Um... No, so, you know, I don't...
Yeah, I can take a shot at it.
Let's do that.
I move that the planning commission, after review of the staff report dated November 28, 2017, recommend that the governing body deny text amendment 17 dash 03 to amend the definition of a sign in Article 17 dot 02 dot 010, definitions of the Gardner Land Development Code. And with no recommended amendment to the provisions in Articles 17 dot 10 sign standards pertaining to wall signs in residential districts based on the following findings. All those, one, all of the signed provisions of the Gardner Land Development Code are designed to regulate signs in a counter neutral manner, thus minimizing the city's legal risks. The current definition of sign, strike that.
Strike item one.
Strike item one, strike item two. So now the new item one. Gardeners' current area allocations for wall signage are consistent with and typical of those of other jurisdictions for low-density residential uses. And new item two. Current standards support the following goals of Chapter 17 dot 10 sign standards. Goal one, preserve the unique character of the city as reflected in distinct areas and districts within the city by ensuring signs contribute to an appropriate sense of place. Goal two, enhance the visual quality of the community reflected in the visual priority of buildings, open spaces, streetscapes, and landscape. Goal eight, protect and enhance public and private investment in property by encouraging the design scale and placement of signs that are appropriately conspicuous, visible, and legible. And goal nine, ensure that the constitutionally agreed, or constitutionally guaranteed right of free speech is protected while allowing signs as a means of public communication.
Second.
Okay, all right, I think we can do this. All right, we have a motion made by Austin with a second by Freeman. We okay? Okay.
Yeah, that's what I was going to, I just want to double check with the council if we're...
Okay, all right. The planning commission, after review of staff report dated November 28, 2017, recommends that the governing body deny TA dash 17 dash 03 to amend the definition of sign in Article 17 dot 02 dot 010, definitions of the Gardner Land Development Code, with no recommended amendment to the provisions in Article 17 dot 10 sign standards pertaining to wall signs in residential districts based on the following findings. Item number one, gardeners' current area allocations for wall signage are consistent with and typical of those of other jurisdictions for low-density residential uses. Item number two, current standards support the following goals of Chapter 17 dot 10 sign standards. Goal one, preserve the unique character of the city as reflected in distinct areas and districts within the city by ensuring signs contribute to an appropriate sense of place. Goal two, enhance the visual quality of the community reflected in the visual priority of buildings, open spaces, streetscapes, and landscape. Goal eight, protect and enhance public and private investment in property by encouraging the design scale and placement of signs that are appropriately conspicuous, visible, and legible. And goal nine, ensure that the constitutionally guaranteed right of free speech is protected while allowing signs as a mean of public communication. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with all in favor. Okay, we've got 30 minutes left. We have one more item. Item 3B, another text amendment. TA dash 17 dash 04, hold a public hearing and consider a proposed text amendment to the Gardner Land Development Code, six section 17 dot 07 billing standards regarding billing design and performance standards for the general industrial building type. Which, we will have a staff presentation on that, but before we do, you guys, great job on the last one. Good discussion, good participation, and thank you for the input.
Certainly, thank you very much.
Yeah, appreciate it. Okay, 3B.
While they bring that up, we'll just get started. How about that?
Great.
Okay, so this amendment was generated by inquiries for future industrial freight and distribution uses involving large warehouse facilities and developers' concerns with some of the design and performance standards. So at the September 26 meeting, the planning commission initiated a potential text amendment. And the intent of that was to research the building and design requirements of adjacent jurisdictions and typical building designs with the intent to provide additional flexibility without requiring code deviations. This talks about our current deviation process that would be available, neither of which are really, well, they both add extra steps to the process. Planned districts aren't intended to be used this way. There is a risk of inconsistency in decisions made by different decision makers, and also leads to developer uncertainty and frustration. So we are trying to make it more clear within the standards that, you know, what they have to follow, and if they follow them, they should get approved. That's the intent. So this is to help you understand what our current standards are, and this is just the design and performance standards for the one building type that we're talking about. So currently, transparency can be located at any height or location on the facade, but they do have to have 30% minimum on all street-facing facades, not just the one, but all. And they do not have to provide direct views into the building necessarily, because they're not required ground floor windows. But just to point out that these uses frequently are surrounded by at least two streets, and commonly, there's loading doors on some of the street-facing facades, with limited the opportunity for windows. And as far as the primary entrance feature, one such feature is required only on the street frontage. Frontage is determined in relationship to the front lot line. So it's generally the side where their address from, or where they're clearly oriented to, but basically, that's one side, one primary entrance feature required per building. And then we have all these other standards, which are really mostly guidelines about massing and horizontal and vertical articulation and ornamentation. And we'll talk more about that. Flexibility is built in with the use of the word should, but it also doesn't, it's kind of wishy-washy when you want to try to require something. So here are some illustrations of some pictures I took over in Riverside when I was up there. I was trying to find a way to show you what I was talking about, or what we're concerned about here. The top building is mostly unbroken by any offsets in the wall plane or the roof line. It does have some attached projections, some higher-quality materials and transparency asymmetrical on some portions of the building. But there are still a lot of remaining surfaces with no visual relief from a flat blank surface. The middle building is similarly one unbroken wall plane, except for some attached projections, and they're achieving ornamentation through some ground floor windows, color changes, and shadow lines. And the bottom one does have a couple changes in roof height, you'll see, but no significant trim or depth change as the transition between those materials. And visual relief is mainly through color texture changes, and so there are still blank unreleased surfaces on the building. So these are just talking about structural massing solutions. That's when you actually have projections and recesses in the building. This is an example of horizontal structural, or horizontal articulation. These portions of the building actually bump out by a significant amount, and then that one bumps out even further. So note, these projections do run the entire height of the building. So there's minimal depth changes there on the right side of the building. There is a little bit of depth change between those color changes, but it wouldn't meet our current suggested articulation requirements, which is a one-foot depth for that offset. So they, those would be more like ornamental architectural details. Then we have vertical structural massing solutions. As you see, the roof line changes up there. So most of the time, when codes talk about vertical articulation, that is what they're talking about, changes in roof height. So sometimes they're combined with changes in depth as well. So sometimes they're combined with changes in depth as well. Really, our requirements are actually our guidelines now. Well, I guess that one is the only one that's a requirement. Talks about vertically framing different structural components. So it's not like a structural component, we don't really have a vertical articulation requirement. And these are some examples of ornamental, basically ornamental ways to break up the mass. So, this building is just about color changes with those shadow lines or expression lines framing those color changes. But it really adds a lot of interest to the building. In our code, right now, horizontal articulation is really just expressed as differentiating the base, the body, and the top of the building. And our vertical articulation, as I just suggested, was, is just basically about the structural changes between materials and colors. But if you're just looking at buildings, you do see how this breaks up visually the building by just having the different colors and the different roof lines and the different depths on the building. Another example, this one has, is pretty flat, but it does have different roof heights that go along with it. This one combines both, or all, everything, different kinds of ornamentation and changes. Other ways to do this are through transparency, and a lot of times, they say, "Well, we can't have that on our buildings." And maybe they can't, it might not be practical, but here are some examples of some that do utilize it. This one's mostly at the top and at the primary entrance feature. This one, it's got a little strip of windows there that's vertical, and then mostly just at the corners, they have windows. This one's got a lot of windows. Primary entrance feature examples. This one doesn't have as much transparency as this one. But they're all pretty much have projections and rises in the roof lines, and then increase in detail. This one's got everything going on too, plus some nice trees, you might know. This one, I wanted you to think about this. Remember, I was talking about how some of those depth changes go all the way to the top of the roof line? These stop short. And my question to you is, just looking at that, you know, does this repetition of those same features along the facade draw your eye up? Break up that mass, or does it just make it look longer as they proceed down the road? And without that change in the roof line, does it really achieve, you know, what we're wanting to do, which is to relate the building scale to nearby buildings and not look contrived, you know, put something on there that just looks contrived, but something that looks in scale with the building? And that's probably a taste issue. So, just highlighting what I'd found out in the other jurisdictions briefly. Edgerton mostly has massing requirements that incorporate all the other things into them as options. So they say you have to use a minimum of three techniques to break up facades over a hundred feet. Hundred feet is like, everybody's pretty much using that hundred foot as, after that, you gotta do something about breaking it up. But, so you can choose between three of these five things to achieve that. Lawrence is basically just completely guidelines. I'm not sure how they implement or enforce it or get it to happen, but they recognize the importance of breaking up the facades vertically and horizontally with structural or design elements, not having continuous roof line, et cetera. And they do, you know, accept shade and shadow patterns as contributing to those goals, and they do also articulate building entrances, or suggest or encourage that. They don't address transparency. Lee Summit also does not address transparency or primary entrance feature requirements. And they also include the ornamentation requirements in their massing strategies. So it's just kinda combining it all into one thing. They're the only ones that really talked about preferring pitched roofs, but they do also have standards like, if you have flat roofs, they need to look like this. So, I'm not sure what that's all about. Lenexa, no transparency or primary entry feature requirements, but again, they have guidelines for breaking up the walls and varying textures, colored lines. They do say that you need four-sided design. They have to have consistent architectural treatments on all sides of the building, so you don't have like a noticeable backside of the building. Aletha was probably the most involved regulations of any, extensive and very specific for massing and ornamentation. Their definition of primary facade, you might think, "Okay, so that's just one facade." Well, no, it's basically the way they defined it. It's any facade that has any pavement adjacent to it at all, and/or has a primary entrance feature. So, I don't know how you would not have a primary facade unless it's just grass behind it and no entrance. So keep that in mind. So, they do require transparency, and then focal points on the primary facade, which may or may not have an entry on it, but it's similar to our primary entry feature requirement. Okay. Findings were basically to strengthen the massing and articulation requirements. So, they're not just guidelines, but they have more options listed. And the suggestion that if there are no substantial changes in wall plane depth, then we probably need to have variations in roof height or roof form in order to compensate for that. Include the ornamentation standards as an option to help with that mass and articulation instead of just a suggestion, that's like a lot of other jurisdictions do. Create alternatives for transparency and reduce the requirement on non-frontage facades, and to keep the front entry feature requirement. So this is how it shakes out. I revised the first sentence, or I guess it's the first sentence in primary entry feature 'cause I was rereading it, where it says, "On each side of the entrance." I think that just means, "On each side of the door, then you have to have that twenty-five feet of this transparency." And I think we should leave that like it is. The only reason I scratched out entrance in the term "primary entrance feature" is because actually, in the other section of the code, it's called a "primary entry feature", so I was trying to just keep it consistent. The massing, we'd be adding that statement that, "On all street-facing facades," that they will, they shall, break down components of the main mass longer than a hundred feet by using at least one of the following options. Changes in the wall plane, extending the full height of the facade, and that we kept the one-foot depth, at least one-foot depth in the wall plane. Or varying roof lines or roof forms every hundred feet or less of facade length. They could do both, they can do just one. Transparency requirement was changed to not be on, not the thirty percent on all street-facing facades, but just on the frontage facade. And then the other street-facing facades would be fifteen percent minimum required. I did suggest that we could allow up to ten percent of that required transparency to be waived if they substitute higher-quality materials on the face, that creates some other interest, or they can use glass that's not transparent if that's an issue. Okay, and then, just putting in the statement that we do want them to do horizontal and vertical breaks as they're defined basically by all other jurisdictions, not just the structural vertical breaks that we talk about, but allowing them, or encouraging them, I guess, actually requiring them to use the bands of color, changes in material textures, giving them a whole, many of things they can do to give some horizontal and vertical articulation to the building visually. And then, the ornamentation standard being in there is just to address the frequency that they would do that ornamentation. That's the current suggestion, but that's just making that a requirement. So, the recommended motion is listed on three slides. So after review of the staff report and et cetera, that we would change just the Design and Performance Standards section, which is 1707040, to read as follows. And that's the stuff I just went through. Okay, that's all I got.
Okay, cool, very good, Kelly. Since this is a public hearing, we'll need to get to the motion of opening the public hearing, so any member of the public is invited to come forward and comment on this item. Please state your name and address for the public record and be heard. Seeing that we don't have anybody coming forward to talk about this item, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion to close a public hearing made by Austin with a second by Brady. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, all in favor, public hearing is now closed. Questions, comments, and I will just caution you guys, I don't know how much discussion you all might have. We've got fifteen minutes allotted on our meeting time to where if we need to go past ten o'clock, we will have to make a motion and have that be approved, go through the process for us to continue past ten. So, I'll give us a few minutes, kinda see where we start going down the discussion, and you know, if we're coming up at five till ten, someone will need to make a motion to extend time. So, I'll just kinda start maybe down on my left with Heath and Tim. Do you guys have any comments, questions for staff on what we've been presented with this evening?
As we look at transparency, one of the things that mentioned is, our transparency standards seem to be a bit more stringent than any of our neighboring jurisdictions. Is that the assumption that I came to?
That's correct.
And we lessen those a bit, but are we still too stringent? Are we creating a negative, or competing against ourselves in that fashion when, you know, every time we've had an exception come up, I think we've made it. Over my three years on the county, every time they're coming up, and I look at the entryway, and you know, fifty to eighty percent of twenty-five feet on each side of that, is that too much? I mean, I would easily grant an exception to someone asking for that. 'Cause I can, even the examples we had in the pictures today, I don't know that any of those met that criteria, and they were all appropriate from what we saw. So, I think we've overwritten some of these things. If we're gonna look at it, maybe there's some of these pieces we just need to scrap. And, but I don't know, I mean, where do we start? And how do we go down that path is probably the question, but you know, I look at these and then go back to the history of the ones I've just voted on, and we've made a lot of exceptions that were one-hundred percent appropriate and the right decision. So then, our regulation's really out of whack for what the construction market and what the design standards are for what we're seeing built around us. And, you know, transparency was one where we stood out. I don't know if we stood out for the right reasons, and that's why we always make the exception to it.
So it's kinda the transparency piece of this text amendment, Heath, that maybe it's even going a step further and having staff take a look at it again, and possibly bring something different back to the Planning Commission?
Yeah, and look and see what the impact, I mean...
Just maybe more study?
Well, and I don't, I mean, I'd hate to say it in such a way that it's slight that they didn't do the study necessary, and now that we have that study, maybe it's just actually changing what our transparency requirements are completely. And maybe that's not for them to decide, for us to suggest and have them look and see what those impacts might be, but I don't know, I mean, you know, as we look at it, fifteen percent on other street-facing, and then we can waive up to ten percent of that transparency, you know, those pieces, but are we asking too much in the primary entry? Are we asking, I do like the massing that we see in front of us right now. I think there's some definite value to that, but maybe some of these other pieces are more than we need to do.
How about the articulation, were you pretty good with that? Ornamentation, that really didn't change. Was that the horizontal?
I don't know, I'm not strong either way on the articulation side, but you know, sometimes I feel like maybe we overcoat, and that might be the case where we are overcoating just a little bit.
Okay. Anything else to add?
No.
Tim?
Just simply, Kelly, I know you've spent a lot of time on this, thank you very much. You did a lot of research, appreciate the pictures. I support the recommendation by staff.
Okay, Tori?
Wow. I kind of agree with Heath on this, that maybe we're making it more difficult, especially if we grant exceptions every time, and maybe that's why some of these other cities, you said, "Well, they didn't really say..." They have guidelines, but they didn't maybe spell it out exactly, I don't know. Maybe we are a little too strict on some of these. I'd be okay with what we're changing, but I do think we make exceptions almost every single time.
Okay. Brett?
And not that I want to extend, but the chances of us resolving this within ten minutes are probably low. So I move that we extend our meeting time till something, ten fifteen.
So we have a motion to extend the meeting time made by Austin with a second.
Second.
Second by Roberts. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Alright, motion carries with all in favor, we will, meeting time extended to ten fifteen Central. Alright, continue on Brett.
Okay. So, along those same lines, I tend to agree, and when we were going through the Land Development Code re-rate process, I didn't understand at that time the transparency requirements that we put in. And I still don't necessarily understand them, or the benefit of them to the extent that we use. I think, for Commissioner Freeman's point, if you look at the transparency note, and Edgerton, Lawrence, Lee Summit, Lenexa, all say none by them, and Aletha, it depends, but maybe twenty percent, and then we've got anywhere from thirty to fifty to eighty. I think that fairly clearly shows that we're out of whack with our surrounding cities. Not that we have to do what everybody else does, but I do agree on this type of building. I think the level of transparency needs to be reduced. I would say, on our, well, I guess one question real quick, and I should know this, but I'm gonna ask it anyway, 'cause somebody else might not know it. What's the difference between a street-facing facade and a street frontage?
We have to determine one side to be the frontage, and we do that by determining which side is the front lot line.
Okay.
And then the others are street-facing, but not the frontage. 'Cause remember, we had those frontage standards that we have to apply to them.
Makes sense, that's what I was thinking, though, I wanted to make sure that I was understanding that correctly. I would say from a transparency perspective, thirty percent minimum on the street frontage for this type of building still seems high to me. I do like the option of reducing the required percentage if they use some other feature to give the same type of effect. I like reducing fifteen percent on the other facades. That seems reasonable to me without doing math and figuring out what that really means. On the entry feature, I don't have any issue with us having or requiring entry features. I think it helps anybody coming up to a building to know where the front door is. I've tried to find the front door on buildings that don't have an entry feature, and it's, you feel stupid and walk around a lot. But fifty to eighty percent transparency on either side of that entrance is astronomical, in my opinion. And I actually have two comments on that, which, I think fifty is way too much, and I think, and I don't understand why we would limit it to eighty. If they wanted a full glass wall, let them have a full glass wall. But that's beyond this discussion and not really relevant. I do agree with, going on to other topics, I do fully agree that we should, we should not use the word "should" in our standards. Standards are requirements and "should" is not a requirement. And so I agree with those changes to change those "shoulds" to "shall." I agree with the articulation. I don't have any issue with that. I agree with the ornamentation. The massing, I agree with that with the one potential caveat of I don't, and maybe it's just me and I don't really understand what it means, but I don't like having the word "generally" after massing because to me that opens it up for being more of a recommendation than a requirement. So if that has some other significance to it within the planning world, let me know. Maybe I'm missing something, but...
I think, I think that's a good point. The reason it said "massing generally" is because it's current, that's the current heading from where it's a guideline. So it probably should just say "massing."
Okay. I don't know what the correct percentages are. I know, I think I know and correct me if I'm wrong. If we change anything within this wording, then we have to wait another month to see it again because of the public hearing issue? Now we can make changes to it? Okay. Well, disregard that I said that then.
Do you have something, Michelle? Yes, please.
Are you done?
Yeah.
Just to give you a little point of reference, the warehouse that you saw at the beginning of the month for Midwest Commerce Center, they met all of these with the current code except for the 30% transparency. They did meet that primary entrance feature with the transparency on each side. They did meet the varying roof lines every 100 feet. They did provide the architectural details as far as color changes and they had panel lines, so it looked like there were different panels. I think the only one they still wouldn't have met was the transparency. I can't remember the exact number that they ended up with, but it was around, I think, 10% transparency on that west side. But potentially they could have qualified for some of those details being waived for the substitution. So just something to kind of think about, something that you've seen recently and how that actually met a lot of those standards. Really, the only one they didn't meet was the full-blown transparency on the side.
Good comparison. Thank you for bringing that up, Michelle. It helps to kind of...
Yeah, oh, that's great. And I guess one clarification question, when we're talking about transparency here, we are talking about the full height of the building. It doesn't have to be within that. It was a 2 to 48 foot or something? Is that for other...
That's correct. It can be anywhere between the floor and the ceiling.
The 4 to 8 thing is for other building types.
Well, no, it's just that if the requirement specifically says it's for a ground floor requirement, it has to be between the 2 and 8 feet. And this doesn't say anything about where, our requirement for this building is just in general transparency. So it doesn't have to meet that.
Okay. Because I know there's been discussion on some other plans that we've reviewed of other building types, so I just wanted to make sure that didn't apply here.
Oh, and just to clarify on the 30%, you do count whatever you have for the primary entrance feature, which would be on that facade. So, you know, if they have to have that extra for the primary entrance feature, that 30% may not seem like a lot on just that one facade, but that's just a thought.
Still thoughts, Brad, or you wrapped up with your...
I'm wrapped up unless you want me to, I mean, we need to throw out some numbers, but I don't know what they are, so...
Yeah, and I'm, I don't know, I've listened to everyone's perspective and especially after Michelle threw in the part about the current proposed project, you know, that we saw earlier this month, and they met all of these with the exception of the transparency, but yet there's always that ability for the applicant to come before the planning commission and say, hey, we'd like a deviation, and then that could be considered. I guess I'm just as of the opinion, I like our standards. I think we're, it seems like we're one of the first cities, in my opinion, in Johnson County that did a completely and code rewrite. So I think we're the ones that are kind of blazing the trail into something new and maybe we should continue to go forward with the new things versus striking them and going back to how they are or, you know, making them more lenient, but maybe have them be a little bit more stringent and strict and make that developer, you know, come to the table with a better product or, you know, come to the planning commission with, well, here's the reason we're asking for a deviation. Make them work for it a little bit. That's just my thoughts on the topic that I just wanted to weigh in. So, I mean, I, I'm flexible. I, everyone's, you know, I think we're all kind of along the same lines. Maybe something we need to look at a little bit more would be the transparency piece. It's kind of what I'm getting a general feeling for, that maybe that's where we need to, if we, you know, should deviate from staff's recommendation, you know, and come up with something a little bit more lenient, I'll say, or maybe a better percentage number. Seems like that's kind of the consensus I've picked up from conversation, that it's the transparency where we might need to consider something a little bit different than what's recommended. So that's my two cents.
I would tend to agree. We're focused on the transparency piece here, and I think it's important to remember, because I just had to remind myself, that we're talking about the industrial building type. We're not talking about any other building types. It's got to be within a district that allows industrial buildings also. And so from that perspective, if, while I agree that we don't need to do what everybody else does just because everybody else does it and we can be trail setters and trend setters and all that, I'm completely on board with that and I want to make sure that our buildings look good in the city. But I also acknowledge that there's a certain limit that, such as the transparency, if everybody who wants to build a warehouse in Gardner has to come in front of the planning commission, they're going to go to Edgerton, Spring Hill, Lenexa, Aletha, somewhere else because it's easier, quicker, faster.
That, I share that same concern. And most importantly, if with this side facilities with Edgerton, I mean, it's the intermodal and we look and see what Edgertons are, and they're not that. So when they, the land is there, the amendments are a little bit stronger in a lot of these cases, other pieces, and we throw some of these other complications, you know, quote, unquote, in. Some people don't see it that way. That's why I worry that we are in a competitive market. We're designing our own competitive disadvantages and maybe unnecessarily so. Transparency is the key piece that, and I, I'm not a builder, so I don't know the difficulties and the extra costs it costs, it takes in and how much of a consideration that truly is when they're looking to develop between two different communities. Maybe it's really minor and we are overthinking that. I do think we need to look at the entry one as well, the previous slide, because we have more percentages and lengths and definitions in that than anyone else that's in this list. And I don't know that you need to have a 50-foot wide main entry feature. So, because if you're going 25 feet on each side of it, that have to have enhanced facade design, that's a 50-feet entry point and that's, that might be bigger than what the front stoop of City Hall is and nobody doubts where it goes. I think some of the length requirements there. Now, some of the list of requirements that we have that talk about what it needs, I think there was somewhere that talked about something that it actually needs to have in regards to qualify as a primary entry point. I can't...
Yeah, they have to have at least three features, I think it is.
Yes, 3 feet, and I didn't see it here, but you have to have three of the list of seven features. Those three should define where your primary entry point is without having additional transparency requirements and additional length requirements. If you can accommodate that and meet three of those within a 15-foot entryway, I feel like that does the trick, especially in a warehouse initiative where, you know, commercial business, walk-in traffic isn't going to be their primarily function. It's not like walking in for pick and pack or walking into the front of Walmart. It's for you to go in and get something signed and walk back out in most cases. So I think we need to look at the primary entry feature and we need to look at the transparency. Some of these other massing and articulation are probably, you know, on point with where we want to end up.
So on the primary entry, it's, going back to what you're saying, it's really the transparency piece that would need to be, you know, struck through, keeping in the architectural ornamentation as that entry, but you're going with them, removing the...
The 25 feet on each side and the 50 to 80% transparency because, like Michelle said, the transparency calculation as a whole will go, and I assume they're going to already incorporate most of that into the primary entry point. And I, you'll have to forgive me, I can't find where the list of the three, three things are that they need to, it's in here, but I can't get back to it. There's so many pages.
Page number.
There's like a list of 10 things.
Yes, and they need to meet three of those. So in my, again, if I'm speaking on my own here, then please just, we can move on, but I think we can strike the 25 feet and the 58 to 80% and just leave in the part where they need to meet at least three of those requirements. Or those three of those...
Architectural ornamentation.
That's it?
And on those three other elements, where they're not, they're written over here under the bulleted entry requirements, but they're not written over here under the standard language. Is an entry feature defined somewhere else to list all those or did we inadvertently delete those?
Okay, the reason it's not listed in there is because our standards all already say for the general industrial building type that you shall have a primary entrance feature. So that, where it's listed in 1707-030, that list of 10 things, it says "should," but because it's required for the general industrial building type, it changes that "should" to a "shall." So we didn't have to say, they have to have the three items, we just know it applies.
So there's another section that defines the primary entry features having those three things?
Correct.
Okay.
One of our targets here is to refer this back to staff and come back and revisit this. Do you feel like, Kelly, you have enough information based upon what you've heard from my colleagues up here to bring this back to us? Or do you guys want to try to hammer this out and give us a moment for these percentages?
Well, I mean, we've got five minutes left on our time clock, so we can, I just get the feeling that we've done this before with the Land Development Code, and when we start to get tired, we really kind of go around, around the axle. And I personally don't know what the right percentages would be on the transparency.
That's why I think we come back and revisit it with refresh. You've got maybe some ideas here to how to bring it back to us. We pointed out a couple of key areas, but I'll stay here until whatever it takes, if y'all want to hammer it out.
Right, we can hammer it out if someone feels like we're getting close to a motion. I'm flexible on the transparency piece. Okay, okay, I'll be flexible. You know, and I'm flexible as well within the primary entrance as far as transparency. We got to have the architectural ornamentation. I didn't want that struck. Everything else is good to me. But I just don't know what the numbers are and I don't know if I could come up with them in five minutes or we could stay longer. That's kind of Adriana's thoughts. I'd be comfortable sending this back to staff as well. I don't know if others have a strong feeling they want to voice out?
I would agree. I don't know what the numbers should be. I do think some of them are maybe too strict, but I don't have, I don't know what the number, I don't, that's not in my wheelhouse. I don't know what...
Okay. So as we're looking at transparency, do we all think 30% on street frontage is good, bad, and different? Because if we want to have staff look at different percentages, we need to tell them which ones to look at. Or do we think 15% on all street-facing facades with a 10% waiver is the better way to look at?
Yes, yes. 30% to me seems too much. I like the 15% minimum and then up to 10%.
So we just change it to 50% minimum of street-facing facades and up to 10% of required transparency can be waived?
Okay.
Is that one? Brad?
Yeah, good.
Okay. Then if we look at the primary entry feature one, if we strike, so we have one per building minimum, we strike at least 25 feet on each side with 50 to 80% transparency and maintaining at least three of the defined primary entry features. Does that mean kind of what we spoke about?
The architectural ornamentation.
Well, I'm just, I'm not sure exactly how they're defined as what that list of 10 things are.
Well, I think that's in the definition of a primary entry feature, which is in a different section than what we have in the...
Yeah.
So we don't really...
So I don't know how to refer back to it to make sure that they, because right now as I see it, nothing, I can't find anything that says they have to have three of those things. I feel like I'm missing it because, thought I saw it before, but I can't get back to where that's at.
Want me to read it to you?
Yeah, where's it at?
It's 1707-030. Be, well, you mean in your staff report?
So it's not in our staff report?
Well, it's on, it's at this entry.
It's just summarized in your staff report. It's not the whole list.
Okay. So it's, that's where it's at. So that summary there. So if we just essentially have that without the 20, the 50 to 80% of 25 feet, is that where everybody kind of feels comfortable at?
And the transparency, I believe, with the 50 to 80% transparency.
Remove the 50 to 80% transparency in the 25 feet of each side?
Yep.
On entryways?
I think that's...
Is everybody? And those are the two main things. We're where the motion is, so, you know...
Can you do it?
Popo's not going to show up before eight minutes, or three minutes late, so if so, we'll give him a week and tell him just to wait outside the door. But I think we can get the motion to there and get it done.
Okay, let's do it.
All right. So, the planning commission, after reviewing findings in the staff report dated November 28th, 2017, recommends that the governing body adopt TA-17-04 to amend the design and performance standards of Section 17.07.040, specific building type standards for general industrial building type of the Gardner Land Development Code to read as follow. 17.07.4.040, specific building type standards, general industrial design and performance standards. Primary entry feature equals one per building minimum required on street frontage. Massing generally equals on all street-facing facades shall break down components of the main mass with single wall planes longer than 100 feet by using at least one of the following options. Number one, changes in the wall plane involving projections and recesses of at least one foot and extending the full height of the facade every 100 feet or less of facade length. Item two, varying roof lines or roof forms every 100 feet or less of facade length. Transparency equals 15% minimum on all street-facing facades. Up to 10% of required transparency can be waived upon substitution of higher-quality building materials such as solid brick, stone, detailed concrete, burnished CMU, specialty glass, or architectural panels. Articulation equals horizontal and vertical breaks with similar architectural details. Materials and colors shall be used on all building facades. Such breaks may include bands of accent color, changes in materials or textures, windows and doors, exposed expansion joints, shadow patterns, expression lines, cornices, and raised parapets. All single plane changes in colored materials and textures shall be separated or framed by expression lines, trim, or similar outlines. Ornamentation equals any other blank walls, other wall areas larger than 8 feet tall by 20 feet wide, 25 feet wide, excuse me, shall be broken up by the ornamental architectural details unless the blank surface area is less than 10% of the total facade in the longest dimension... and the longest dimension of the blank surface area is less than fifty feet.
Can I ask for one slight change? Delete generally after massing?
Yes. Yes. I amend the motion to remove the word generally after massing.
Okay, great. So you have an amended motion made by Freeman with.
I apologize, we have to pause because in our definitions on the next page, item four is defined as massing generally. Do we need to have that there for circular reference? You see what I'm saying, Brad?
Are you, are you talking about massing in section seventeen oh seven oh three oh? Because, no, I don't think you have to have it consistent.
Don't have to have it, so if we leave it out in here, we won't create an error in oh three oh?
Right.
Okay. As long as we think that's the case.
Okay, all right. Amended motion made by, oh, we're okay?
Yeah, that's, that's fine. I'm sorry, I was looking at it. That's a subset of the definition which starts massing.
Perfect.
Sweetness. Okay, great. Amended motion made by Freeman with a second by Austin, that the planning commission, after review of findings in the staff report dated November twenty eighth, two thousand seventeen, recommends that the governing body adopt TA one seven dash zero four to amend the design and performance standards of section one seven dot zero seven dot zero four zero. Specific building type standards for the general industrial building type of the Gardner Land Development Code to read as stated on the record by Heath Freeman, Commissioner Freeman, with changes therein. Okay, all right. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with all in favor. Great job, guys.
Move to adjourn.
Second?
The fastest motion to adjourn ever made by Austin with a, I believe that was Freeman with the second. Okay, great. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with all in favor. Meeting's adjourned.
Not really in a hurry to adjourn, but technically we.
Technically.
You did it.
A minute ago, so.
No, that's fine. Good job sticking.